Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the South Haven City Council. Today is Monday, April 21st, 2025. This meeting is called Order. This evening's invocation is by Pastor Anton Bidenhorst of Hope Reformed Church. And while you're walking, I want to say thank you for moving to the city of South Haven and supporting our public schools. We're really happy to have you in South Haven.
Thank you.
I know it's been awhile.
It's been a minute, yes.
Yeah.
Let's pray. God of all wisdom, love, and grace, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, we gather tonight as leaders and servants of South Haven, humbled by the responsibility entrusted to us. We seek your guidance as we make decisions that shape our community's future. Grant us wisdom and discernment that we may see clearly the needs of all our neighbors and act with integrity and courage, especially when called to lift up those who are poor, vulnerable, and unheard. Give us the strength to do what is right, even when it is difficult, and the compassion to place the needs of others above our own. Unite us in our diversity. Help us to listen deeply to one another, to honor our differences, and to find common ground for the good of all. May our conversations and actions foster harmony, understanding, and a spirit of cooperation throughout South Haven. Raise up this council and our entire community to be a positive voice and influence, a beacon of hope, kindness, and possibility. Let us work together not only as officials, but as partners with every resident, to make South Haven a safe, beautiful, and life-giving place to live and to visit. There's our mayor, city staff, first responders, and all who serve. Guide our leadership so that every decision we make reflects your justice, your mercy, and your love. We ask all of this with grateful hearts, trusting in your presence among us, in the beautiful name of our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Megan, could we have a roll call, please?
Of course. Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Mary Hosley.
Here.
Wendy Onuki.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Latisha Wilkins.
Here.
And Annie Brown.
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would like to add an amendment to just discuss lifeguards and what our next steps are.
Okay.
Support.
Okay. All in favor to approve the agenda and adding lifeguards as a discussion item, say yes.
I.
Yes.
I.
Discussion.
Okay. George.
Who's gonna, who's gonna, who's gonna do the talking?
I'm hoping we can just kind of talk about what we want to see happen next, and hopefully it's on the Kate's, whatever, not Kate's agenda, but hopefully you can tell us just a little bit more about what to expect since time is of the essence. That was, I'm not planning on making any actions, but I just want us to be able to discuss as a council what to expect.
And we do have a plan moving forward that Kate was going to check on the finances.
Right. I'm just wondering when it's coming back. So I thought having a discussion instead of waiting till city manager comments would be nice.
Okay. Mary?
Yeah, and I would also like to add the agenda item for selection, next steps for selection of the law firm to perform prosecution services for the city of South Haven that went nowhere at last meeting.
Okay. So this is a motion to change the agenda by adding a discussion about lifeguards and adding, did you say a discussion or, Mary?
Advise on the next steps for selection of the law firm to perform prosecution services for the city of South Haven. I mimicked the agenda item 16 from the April 7th.
So that's a discussion.
Um.
Okay.
It's advise, so potentially it could be.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Let's have a roll call.
So I would suggest we take the motion to amend with Wendy's, with Councilwoman Onuki's motion first, so we don't have two motions on the floor, just so we know for sure what we're voting on. So the motion to amend to include a discussion on lifeguards, Arnold.
No.
And Hosley?
Yes.
Onuki?
Yes.
Reiser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
No.
Wilkins?
Yes.
And Brown?
No.
Motion carries. And then, so I have a motion to amend the agenda to add Councilwoman Hosley's item, and who was the second on that one?
There was in a second.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Joe, sorry. Alrighty. So then I've got Hosley.
Yes.
Onuki?
Yes.
Reiser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
No.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
No.
And Brown?
No.
Motion carries.
And we're gonna add those two ID, those two 16A. Lifeguards can be A, B can be attorneys. Now it's time for a community update. April is Autism Awareness Month, and our guest is Taryn Hetrick. She is the Southwest Regional, excuse me, Southwest Regional Parent Mentor for the Michigan Alliance for Families, and she's a South Haven Township resident. And I've known her for years, so thank you so much for being here.
Sorry, I'm not that tall. Do we, turn to the PowerPoint?
No idea.
Oh, marvelous. Okay. Can you guys hear me okay? All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Taryn Hetrick. As Annie said, I am a native to South Haven. It's where I grew up, it's where I went to school, couple of you guys taught me. It's where I met my husband, and now it's where we are choosing to raise our children. I want to first start off and thank our mayor, Annie Brown, for inviting me here to share one of my greatest passions. Today, I have come here to shine a light on autism, a spectrum that represents not just challenges, but incredible strengths and unique perspectives. Autism is not a limitation. It is a different way of experiencing the world, and it's our collective responsibility to foster understanding, acceptance, and inclusion. April is Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month. I would love to explore how we can celebrate neurodiversity and create spaces where everyone can thrive. If you are unaware, sorry, autism, or autism spectrum disorder, is a neurodevelopmental condition that affects how a person interacts with others, communicates, and experiences the world. It is called a spectrum because it encompasses a wide range of characteristics and abilities, meaning that each individual has their own unique strengths and challenges. When I wrote out what I was gonna say and highlight, the CDC did state that in 2025, almost 1 in 34 children would be affected, or diagnosed with autism. As of last week, that has recently changed to 1 in 31. Recently, it was changed to 1 in 12 boys were diagnosed with autism. In 2020, that rate was 1 in 44. You may ask why that's significant. Well, in 2020, my son was diagnosed with autism. He was 1 in 44. So it is guaranteed with these statistics that you may now encounter a person with autism in your daily life. Maybe you have a family member, maybe you know someone in the community with autism, or maybe your child has a classmate or two with autism. So with the rise in autism today, it is very important to understand, accept, include, and embrace these individuals. And autism is such a broad subject, and there's so much information and knowledge pertaining to the subject. And I'll have you know, Annie gave me 10 minutes, and I kind of freaked out, because as you know, it is a big topic, so she gave me five extra. So I'm gonna try to get this in 15 minutes and less, okay? But what I want you to remember is that when you know someone with autism, you just know one person with autism, meaning every person with autism is different and not the same, that each individual has their own unique strengths and challenges. And I also want to share that I was highly discouraged by my supervisor to not stand here today and talk about autism, because I am not trained specifically on autism. However, I do have almost 10 years of experience, hands-on, with content. So when I, when it comes to being a pro, I am a pro when it comes to my son. While I can't speak on all children or individuals with autism, I want to share a little of my world with you, and why speaking, educating, and advocating for individuals with autism is so important to me. First, I do have a question for you. When you think of the autism spectrum, how do you picture it? Do you picture it as a line going from less autistic to more autistic, or low functioning to high functioning? Do you think it's a line from left to right? My answer is no. Autism spectrum is not linear. It does not go from left to right. So I want you to think of the autism spectrum like a color wheel or a pie chart. Each piece represents a different aspect, such as social differences, interests, repetitions, sensory sensitivity, emotional regulation, perception, and executive functioning. And the ranges are gonna be filled in more or less in different categories. Again, because every person with autism is, who is diagnosed, will have different ranges of certain categories, because no two individuals with autism are the same. When Jackson was first diagnosed, I remember the words, "Your child has autism." Those are words that hit like thunder, okay? He, we listened for over an hour of all the things my son would never be able to do, the things he was gonna struggle with in his lifetime. He was considered non-verbal at that time, which means he can't communicate. He would probably have to live at home. Expect him not to graduate, and when he was diagnosed, he was four years old, you guys. He won't ever be able to ride a bike or play on a sports team. If I could go back and laugh at these individuals, I would. I say this because in our house, we don't accept any of this. We don't settle. The diagnosis does not define my son's abilities. Jackson is now nine, and he surpassed a lot of these barriers that were put on him at such a young age. He attends public school with his peers and does well. He struggles with math, but so did I. He taught himself on the first try to ride a bike without training wheels. He plays soccer with his peers. Oops, sorry. And these are all the things that the doctor said that he would never do, and he's done them. So he surpassed these. So just because they say it can't be done, doesn't mean it can't be done. It's important, important to know that some individuals will live at home. Some might have to go into adult foster home. Well, Jackson, I don't know, but I want to tell you, I will give him the rights of support and accommodations to make him as successful as possible, so he might be able to do those things, but we don't accept it as no. So I, we give him all the tools that he can. It is also important to know that some students do attend center-based programs, some will earn a certificate of completion, some will earn that high school diploma. And I say this again, because everyone with autism has different needs, and different accommodations, and different services, in order to make them as successful as they can, because each individual has their own strengths and weaknesses, just like us. One of the major struggles that Jackson struggles with is communication. For the longest time, he wasn't able to answer questions. In fact, his very first speech therapist canceled us, because he said, "Your son will never talk, and he will never be able to do these things." So we kept searching for a new speech therapist. We found one who works incredibly well with Jackson. He can now, from his non-verbal days, he can answer questions. He can answer yes or no questions. We are on the why questions. But you know what? Without us pushing, we would have accepted that he may not, we could have accepted that he may never talk. So where Jackson is now considered verbal, some individuals with autism do rely on devices to communicate. But I also want you to remember, just because they may not be able to talk, doesn't mean they can't hear. Jackson struggles with language when he's overstimulated. That is when we see a breakdown in language. When that happens, it may take him longer to answer questions, process the questions. We have to let him answer on his terms, because when we keep repeating, it causes him to get more distressed, which causes agitation, yelling, or simply, he just walks away from us and hides. I say this because it's important, because others could feel this way during certain stressful situations as well. Many people have deep, many autistic people have deep passionate interests that they focus on intently. It can be all-consuming, but in the best way. They also tend to info dump and share excessive details about their interests. This makes it hard for others to understand and engage, especially for children. Sometimes these are age-appropriate, sometimes they're not interesting. For Jackson, his interests include 25 Hallmark singing Christmas snowmen. They live in my house. We have backups. There are permanent decoration in our house. We also have Thomas the Trains, and if you guys remember Thomas the Trains, there's hundreds of them. There are entire track around our house. They're on my tables, they're countertops, they're lined up. He brings them to school, he talks about them frequently. Jackson also loves maps, state, country, worldwide. It is important to know that these interests do change, but we also revisit a lot of these interests. And as his parent, it's important for me that I share interest in his interests. It encourages us to open that communication, find cool ways to interact, and it's a way I can get inside his world, and it opens up all the doors. Other things that come are often considered weaknesses of autism, is the difficulty with change. Unexpected changes in schedule or situations can cause anxiety. It happens in our house. We often have to prepare Jackson days ahead, if we're gonna go on a date, if we're going on vacation, or if they're gonna have a sleepover at their grandparents. While I don't see this as a weakness, I see this as a boy who strives on structure. Sensory sensitivities are another thing that is common. Autistic brains produce 42% more information than neurotypical brains. Their senses are heightened from visual, sound, smell, light, which leaves them all in a decision paralysis. Imagine walking into the grocery store, and all of those senses hit you within the first 10 seconds, leaving you frozen. Your brain is like an overloaded circuit. This causes shutdown of your executive, executive functioning skills, which may cause a meltdown or causes you to stimulate to try to regulate yourself. So let's talk about stimming. Have you ever seen someone stim and thought, "That's odd"? I'm here to tell you that stimming is okay. Everyone, even you, stim, whether that's twirling your hair, cracking your knuckles, and tapping your foot up and down. For Jackson, it's those repetitive movements, like jumping, making sounds, spinning in a chair. Stimming also can be twirling, rocking, walking on tiptoes, and that classic hand flapping. Stimming helps regulate them. It helps him make him feel safe. Therefore, in our housing, we allow the stimming, so if he's not hurting himself or anywhere, we stim away. Since I only focus on a fraction of the struggles, I want to highlight strengths, because autism is such a beautiful thing. Jackson has an impeccable memory. I would say that's a talent. He can walk into the room and ask, "What's your name? What's your date of birth? And how old are you?" You guys probably don't want to answer that, right? But it could be weeks or months later, and he can come up to you and say, "What's your name?" He'll ask you, because he wants you to know, but he can memorize your name, your date of birth, and how old you are. He memorizes entire shows, books, and he can tell you, like I said, all the Thomas the Train characters just by their face, and there's hundreds of them, because we're collecting them. Also, where I struggle, and most adults do as well, Jackson thrives. I have never met a person, let alone a child, who has the ability to socialize in the capacity that he does. It amazes me, because language is such a struggle for him. But he has no problem walking up to people and saying, "Hello, what's your name?", because he generally wants to get to know each and every one of you. And most people don't want to answer. Now, let's focus on what this really is about. It's about inclusion, acceptance, and awareness. So I'm gonna turn the table on you. You don't have to answer, but just think about it. What does inclusion mean to you? Inclusion isn't about being in the same room. It's about feeling that you belong, feeling important and valued, receiving support to fully participate, focusing on their abilities and strengths, giving them a voice when they need it, feeling seen and understood, meaningful participation without barriers, and the ability to be theirselves without judgment. So I went to Facebook, the good old Facebook, and asked them what inclusion means to them. So here are some of their answers, and the truth is, everyone wants to be included. It's human nature to want that, so why aren't we doing more to make that happen for those who need it the most? So I'm gonna share with you a little story as I start wrapping this up. When Jackson was in first grade, I remember volunteering on Jackson's classroom. I loved to volunteer, and a little boy came up to me and said, "Are you Jackson's mom?" And I smiled so big and said, "Yes," only to find out that he asked, "Why is your son so weird?" I took a pause, mainly because, one, I was surprised, and two, I just wanted to cry. I simply asked him, "Well, what made him weird?" He said, "'Cause he repeats me." And so I explained that reading, repeating was his way of learning the language. He's learning from you. And that little boy lit up like a Christmas tree. And I also talked about, just because Jackson has autism, does not mean he is not like you. So we began to talk about the interests. We talked about his interests, and how Jackson shared some of those interests, and how he should share his interests with Jackson. I remember walking, the kid walking away, and I felt, I was sad, thinking, "How in first grade are kids already noticing my child is different?" Now, I expected that later on in life, third grade, fourth grade, not first grade. But there is a silver lining in this, okay? The teacher caught me outside the hall and said, asked what was wrong, and I said, "This is what's going on." She got the team together, Maple Grove has a wonderful team, so I'm gonna shout them out right now, and they talked about autism to first graders. This, after this discussion, the classroom started understanding Jackson and what he was about. We're gonna fast forward to second grade. He had an amazing teacher who embraces autism, geared lessons towards specific interests. The students felt the sense of community around Jackson. They would quiz him on Hallmark storm, Hallmark snowmen, and perplexed, they couldn't, perplexed, they couldn't trick him. They cheered him on when he had put a United States map together faster than anyone, beating his time and beating the entire class. Again, in second grade, another discussion with the entire grade happened. This time, more meaningful conversations with his peers happened. They asked questions. "What can we do? Is there a cure? How do we help Jackson?" Other classmates shared they had siblings with autism, and what their siblings did differently than Jackson, again, because no two individuals with autism are alike. So today, Jackson is in third grade. I have no idea how that happened. We're trying to hold him back, just kidding. Jackson has way more friends. He is loved by all at his school. He truly does an amazing job at, his school truly does an amazing job at accepting, embracing, and including him and others with disabilities. They do not put any barriers, nor see Jackson or other peers with autism as an issue. Another student brought in this year bracelets and stickers on autism, which led to another discussion about inclusion acceptance. A third grader did this on his own. I didn't have to do this, which usually I would. Can you imagine if these discussions happened in the home regularly? If this is how accepting children are when they understand, why can't adults be the same? So as we wrap up, I do want to share some resources with you. One of them is Michigan Alliance for Families. That is where I come in. We are the parent training information center for the state of Michigan. We are grant-funded through the Michigan Department of Education. We help families educate with 504s, IEPs, how to get them. We offer free trainings, all things free. It's not just for autism, it's all for 13 eligibility categories for the state of Michigan. Also is the statewide autism resource and training at Start. This promotes change and collaboration between schools, parents, and service coordination, and they offer some specific approaches. And the last one is Michigan Autism Alliance, which offers support and service coordination throughout their lifespan. So as we wrap up, let's remember that understanding and acceptance are the first steps toward building a truly inclusive world. Autism is not a barrier. It is a different way of seeing, feeling, and contributing to the world around us. Together, we can celebrate neurodiversity and ensure, and ensure that every individual, regardless of their place on the spectrum, has the opportunity to thrive. So thank you, guys, for allowing me to open up, share about autism, and my story.
Thank you. Did anyone have any questions for Taryn?
Does Taryn have a favorite college football team?
Go Buckeyes!
I just had a comment related to what you talked about, and I appreciate you coming and sharing that story, and hopefully.
Absolutely.
People just kind of have more open eyes and willingness to learn more about it. But I was subbing, at Maple Grove, it happened to be a few months ago, and the kids, there was one boy that was on the autism spectrum, and the other kids in the room were so kind and sweet, and I didn't even have to ask them, they were just constantly like, looking out for him, supporting him. It was just incredible to witness, so I like what you were saying about that being a thing now, and I've seen it myself, and I think it's so important.
Yes, I'm glad you did.
Yeah, thanks.
Anything else? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Annie.
Mayor, before we go forward, I think the clerk has let me know that we do need to have a vote on the amended agenda.
Oh.
So we have those two motions that were approved, and so we have to have the mote, the vote on the, on the agenda.
Yeah, we forgot that one. Okay, so we need to vote on that now?
Yes, please.
A motion to?
We have a motion already on the floor, we just need a vote on the amended agenda.
Oh, okay, got it, okay. All in favor, say yes. Yes. A pause? The motion passes. Thank you. Next, we have Gail Patterson Gladney, who is going to give an update from the Van Buren County Commission. Thank you for being here.
Well, thank you for having me. I just want to say, that was amazing educational talk, and I was glad that you invited her. Neurodiversity, I didn't know that title. Many years ago, I worked for the schools and tutored several students who were autistic, and they had to be separated from the school students and come home, but if, I could see that if the teachers and the students knew more about autism, they could do like the previous speaker mentioned. But thank you again for that, that was wonderful. Okay, I have some highlights from the county. The board approved CIP, that's the Capital Improvement Plan, funded projects to replace the carpet at the South Haven Courthouse, and replace siding on the administration building. The board also approved acceptance of a warranty deed from Misham Properties LLC to support the development of a public kayak launch on the Paw Paw River. We also approved the submission of a $3 million congressional-directed spending application to construct a new 911 dispatch emergency operations center. And Senator Peters reached out to the county to let us know about this opportunity. We said, we wish we had known over the years more about these opportunities, and so we are looking forward to applying often for that grant, if possible. Also, the board approved continuation of the voter-approved 911 local surcharge for fiscal year 2025 to 2026, and that vote was taken in August of '24 at the primary election. We also adopted a resolution supporting Michigan House Bills 4124 to 4129 to promote small modular nuclear reaction, reactor development and energy sector workforce investment. We also approved a letter of support for Midwest Energy and Communications Application for the BEED program funding to improve broadband infrastructure in underserved areas. And all these acronyms, I will let you know what the BEED program is, is the Broadband Equity Access and Deployment Program. It has been one of our goals over the years to make sure that everyone has a chance to get adequate broadband in our county, and Lawrence is that last little area that we're working on, so this would apply to Lawrence. And if you know anyone who does have problems and they're not served, please let them, ask them to call me or call the county, because we really are, want to make sure everyone has that ability for high-speed internet. The board approved the AI, artificial intelligence, usage policy to guide the county's responsible use of artificial intelligence technologies. And I just talked to Jerry Happel today. He is the director of the Digital Information Department for Van Buren County, and there's a Van Buren County AI task force, they'll be meeting tomorrow. They have a policy that they brought to the county, and we approved. Commissioners also approved the proposal for the development of a shared DID, Digital Information Department, with St. Joseph County. And Jerry Happel said that at their last meeting in St. Joe, the commissioners had to table that item, because they had so many things to discuss, and so they will be letting us know in the future if that's something that they want to work on with us. It will help, collaboration will help maximize resources, improve efficiencies, help the employees with their. employees with their task, and the system will be monitored to minimize biases. Also, all employees will be trained, those who are using the AI tools, on ethics and I also wanted to let you know that there are some programs that are being affected in our community by some of the federal mandates. And I can't go through all of those now, but I am going to be having meet and greets and coffees with the public. The first one is going to be in Covert, May 10th, at 11 o'clock at the Covert Branch Library. And so if you have questions, we can talk about different items that are going on. I do want to mention a press release that I just got today from Christine Van Landenham. She is the CEO for Region Four Area Agency on Aging. And she said the older Americans services are at risk or eliminated in Trump's proposed budget. And so I can give this information to your clerk, I mean, your, I'm sorry.
City manager.
Your city manager. And also, I wanted to let you know, May is Older Americans Month, and there's usually a annual senior expo, and that's gonna be from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM Friday, May 9th, at the Mendel Center in Lake Michigan College. Have any of you gone, or you're too young to go? Okay, but I've been, and it was great. If you have parents or friends that would like to go, let them know about this. They have a lot, everything's free, they have different services. The first 1,000 attendees get a free tote bag. And it is presented by Area Agency on Aging and Herald Palladium. And this theme's, year's theme is Flip the Script on Aging. So I will let your manager know about that. And then, one of the last things I wanted to let you know about, Local Government Leadership Intensive Southwest Michigan Training Program. And this is a one-day leadership intensive training to learn more about Great Lakes Leadership Academy, and how they help groups work together to be more effective in serving the public. And there is a fee on that, but it is, this is going to be June 21st, 10 o'clock in the morning to 4:00. And that's at the MSU Extension Van Buren County Office, and that's in Hartford, and the address will be given to Kate here. And then the last item I just wanted to mention is that our very own Reverend E.T. Buck received a proclamation from the county and also from your mayor at his 100th birthday party on April 12th. And he is an amazing person, if you ever get to meet him, before he moves with his family down south, I think he's planning on doing that. He drives his own car, he said he's never been sick a day in his life, he's amazing, faithful, loving neighbor and resident. He is a member of Spiritual Church of Christ, where Reverend Aaron Cobb's is the pastor. He's received the Governor's Award, the Black History Leadership Award, Region Four Area on Aging Award, and he's known by many children as Grandpa Buck, because he's worked for over 15 years, I think almost 18 years, at the Flowers Early Learning Center, which is the new name for Head Start in town, so. And that's all I have, unless you have questions. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. It is now time for public comment for items on the agenda excluding items scheduled for public hearing, and you have up to five minutes.
Hi, my name's Maureen Londowski. I'm on the South Haven Charter Township Board, and I also am on the Board of Chara. I was, I am here because I'm surprised that the vote for the rec director didn't go through, although I know Wendy, you, and Mary did not vote to even have it put on the ballot, so I'm not surprised with your votes. But this is for the community, and when you don't do something for the children, you poke the bear. The bear has been poked. And I don't understand, summer is coming up, we need to hire a rec director now so that they can make plans for the families, and of all ages too, because I've heard that. But summer is fast approaching, and what we need to do is ID the problems and needs within the community, and then get those goals and needs met. It's in the public interest of all. It did get voted yes, 612, to no, 748. So the community voted to have it. And I think the more that we delay the hiring of the rec director, the programs for the summer and the kids will be also delayed. I've also heard that the person, somebody said, oh, needs to have a master's degree. Well, I've got a couple master's degrees, and I did rec for Kalamazoo County, the first county ever that included developmentally disabled. And people came from Kalamazoo, pretty much east to Detroit, and there were two other counties that came to learn about it. You don't have, I did not use either of my master's degrees to do, get that going. It's just a will that you want to help people, and you go ahead and do it. And I'm hoping that when that item comes up, that you all will vote yes, so that we can get a rec director hired and get the programs going.
Thank you.
Jack Fitzher, 24 and a half grand Boulevard, you're probably tired of me. It's been, you know, five or six years that I've been talking about a recreation program in our community, and for five or six years, stuff has been happening gradually, and here we are tonight, taking a vote. But I think I'm talking more to these folks back here than, than to you guys, because I'm, I, the, the idea of a rec director is a, is a really perfect one. However, a part-time rec director being supported by, in the schools is not a good program to, to begin with. I think as a part-timer, the fact that you're looking to hire someone who's a professional or experienced in this area, which is what you do need, is a professional. As a part-timer, you limit about 95% of the job searching class. If you expect to find someone outside of the area to come here and work part-time in that business, I think you'll have a serious problem. They've asked me, Scott and the boards, asked me to sit in on the, the interview process with these folks, and I'm happy to do that. But I do not believe that you, the pool of applicants will be acceptable right off the bat. We're pretty lucky, you know? Listen, the obvious thing here, though, is something else, and is that I've dwelled on this for such a long time that I forgot one of the real important things. There are 4,000 people in the city of South Haven or so, and from those 4,000, a vote was taken, and the millage was passed, and I was one of the loud proponents in favor of it. There are 4,000 additional people that live in the township in the school district area. The millage will accumulate about $270,000, $280,000 in taxes. 90,000 of that is scheduled to go, one-third to, if this passes, to the schools, who will then hire a part-time employee to run a, the recreation program, a part-time employee The result of this going to the schools is that the borders of the school then become the proponent, the, the folks who will benefit from the millage, the $90,000 that'll be handed to the, to the school district. Now, that's an additional 4,000, so our folks in the town here will be supplementing 4,000, almost double, maybe more, of the population than, than the actual taxes. We're paying taxes, 4,000 people are paying taxes, and 4,000 additional people will benefit from it. Chara, nothing, $0, come from the Chara budget to assist in this. So I'm not complaining about this, but what I'm gonna do is suggest something. I suggest a change in this whole idea. One, hire a full-timer, have Chara submit some of the funds, even out of the 90,000 that we're gonna give to Chara, without, at this point, any idea where that money is going to. Provide some of that to hire a full-time rec director who can do a professional job, and then have that rec director report to Chara.
Give one minute.
Very good. Have that rec director report to Chara, the South Haven Area Recreation Authority. These are the people who have the interest in recreation, they're the ones that should be managing it along, managing the result of a search for a full-time rec director. Again, the citizens of South Haven are paying the entire bill, the benefits will be the township and the school district boundaries. So just consider that in, in this. It just doesn't make sense, the way this whole thing is structured at this time, and I hope you'll reconsider, revote this down, and look at it with another, more professional attitude towards recreation for this particular town. Thank you.
My name's Kevin D., I'm the Director of Non-Instructional Services for South Haven Public Schools. I've been in that position for about 14, 15 years now. I'd like to step back, though, before talking about that. I'm gonna go back to when my son was playing soccer out on ASO fields about 22, 23 years ago, and when I helped coach Little League about the same time period, Annie, I think your son Jack was on the team with us. And we were, as parents, passing a hat around for something called Charps Park. We'd pass a hat around, do fundraisers, trying to improve the recreational opportunities for kids in the community. I got the opportunity to see some of the programming back then. There was a ton of programming, there was a rec director that was help-funded by the city and that was employed by the school district, that provided program for the community, and not just the kids, but for the entire community. I know we used to go to Open Swim, there was not a lot to do in the wintertime here in South Haven, and we always enjoyed doing that. But over the last 14, 15 years, I've had the opportunity to work collaboratively with the city, with Chara, with the township, with our previous mayors and city managers, and trying to help find a solution to, you know, the death of athletic facilities for our community. You know, the school district, you know, that funding went away. Most of that programming has all been evaporated over the years, but the school district has carried on, you know? We've supported JYL, ASO, RAC, Our Town Players, all different sorts of community activities in our schools and continuing to do so to this day. The build, our buildings are there. We have a lot of facilities and a lot of opportunities to provide programming in the district and in the community, throughout the city, for our residents, not only our kids, but for adults as well. But without the funding for it, and people to run these programs, you know, we get what we, we've had to today. We've tried to keep the programming up, but who manages it? Who's able to go out there and present these things forward and let us even know that they're opportunities? As a parent, when I had children in the district, I was looking for, what opportunities are there, when is JYL sign up? When is the sign up for ASO? You gotta go to all these diverse places to find it. You know, having someone to organize these things and put them in one house where we can present these things to the community and let them know what all the great opportunities there are available for us. You know, working with the district, you know, we also support so many other things, you know? We have our pool open to the emergency services. I was in a conversation with Owen Ridley recently, he loved to bring scuba diving to the community as classes. But with our programming, with our insurance costs, which I think is the biggest hurdle for most of the organizations and the people who want to bring programming, whatever they're passionate about, they want to bring it to the kids or the community, is a real roadblock for them. I think this position in the coordination and leveraging the district, leveraging our facility, continuing on with the longstanding partnership we've had with the city, with Chara, I remember the city and the South Haven Township and the school district are the board members of Chara's, we are the standing members of Chara. We are all working together to bring these opportunities to the community. I think we have so much more opportunity, if we all work collaboratively and utilize our resources together, that we can bring more programming to the district. We would love for it to be a full-time position, we'd love that the millage was two to three times what it
Give one minute.
But we think there's a great opportunity here for us to continue to work collaboratively and bring forward programming for our kids, not just our kids, but for the entire community. So I ask that the, you know, the council consider to vote, and hopefully you vote in favor of it, so we can leverages, leverage our opportunities together, because I think working together, we're all, all more than the sum of our parts. Thank you very much.
My name is Brock Thumb, I'm the new Athletic Director at South Haven Public Schools. This is my fourth year in the district. I served as three years in the high school as a history teacher, and we had some movement this year, and I took on the Athletic Director role. I'm here in support of the rec director position. I think it would be very beneficial for our youth sports programming, but not just that, any programming within the community. We have a great deal of pickleballers that come and play on our facilities throughout the summer and throughout the year when it's nice, and they share that with our tennis program. But one of the big proponents I'm here for is our youth sports program. I'm a big believer in youth sports and using sports as character building to better our kids and our society moving forward. And with that being said, I've had almost every, I think besides one, JYL, My Way Wrestling, Rocket Football and Cheerleading, both Little Rams Basketball for Boys and Girls, all of their leaders of their respective sports has come to me asking this school year what the hangup was with the rec director position. We had a little bit of a pause when Kevin Schooly retired with the new superintendent Anna coming on board, so we wanted to pause and get everything under control, and then continue those conversations moving forward, so we were stalled out there for a little bit. But I think, again, this would be very beneficial for summer enrichment programs. We obviously live near a lake, some of the swimming things have gone, not so great, from my understanding, from the past handful of years during the summer. I think we need to make sure that that's taken care of. Obviously, some of the lifeguarding things are on the agenda as well, so I think that would be highly beneficial for some of those things to come into the community. And I think this can grow, it's obviously starting part-time, like Kevin said there. We'd love for this to be full-time, but the benefits package is quite a bit more. So part-time is kind of where we're at right now in this position, we want to see grow, to work with the DNR, to do trail walks and things like that for the kids, and different things for our older population, because we do have an older population in the city of South Haven. So I just think this would be a very beneficial thing for everyone involved, not just our kids, our middle-aged kids, but even our elderly folks here in the city of South Haven, I think it would be very beneficial. So this is just my support for the South Haven Public Schools to, and for you guys to approve the rec director position, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Nancy Nelson, I'm a South Haven resident and the CFO at the school district. I would like to ask for each of your yes votes on the community rec director, and just want to just wanted to address the two concerns of the previous, uh, speaker. One was, excuse me, the part-time status. This position would start out, pardon me. This position would start out part-time, but 29 hours per week. Uh, we would all love, as others have mentioned, this to become a full-time position. Um, but right now it's 29 hours and that's still somewhat significant. Um, I also just wanted to address the collaboration. Uh, Kevin mentioned this as well. Um, but this, Shara is a part, you know, South Haven Public Schools, Township, City, Visitors Bureau, and we are a collaborative group. Uh, this is not South Haven Schools, just hiring someone to do what South Haven wants. It's for the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Anna Al. I'm on Putman and I am the new superintendent of South Haven Public Schools. Um, I've only been on the job for 12 weeks, but I, um, I grew up in South Haven. I was born here and as I was listening to all of the speakers tonight, I couldn't help but think, I was, I was taking notes. Um, Wendy, I was hearing you say that you subbed in our schools recently, our presenter talking about autism. She has children that go to our schools. Um, I have a nephew at baseline who is, who has autism. Um, our flowers program where grandpa Buck is volunteers at is being greatly affected by our federal, our federal budget cuts. And at this point, we don't even know if it's going to exist. And we are all so entwined, right? We don't exist one without the other. And if you know a town like South Haven, you know that it is all about collaboration, that we have maybe three big organizations. We've got our school, we've got our hospital, um, the city where we all work. That's where we all exist. We coexist. Without collaboration, we couldn't do it. So when I stand before you, this is not a business deal. This is a personal deal. We're talking about my brother-in-law who's in his seventies who plays pickleball every Saturday. We're talking about, we're talking about the, the lap pool in the morning at five o'clock where my eye doctor says, you know, I'll, I'll help, I'll help run it until we can get someone to help cover it, you know? My former eye doctor. I need to get a new eye doctor now that I'm back in town, but it's, it's, it's all of us. It's not Shara and it's not the schools and it's not the city. It's us. It's us as a community. We stand together. So I'm asking all of you to think about that. You, you can't walk down our city streets and not know somebody. And even as I look here, there are teachers on this board. They are, I, I just feel so emotional about this. I don't, when you don't know this, I live right down the road from you and I see your little girls and I see them on their scooters and I see your husband on his skateboard and I've never even met you. You know, this is what our town is like. It's us. And so when we stand, we, we, we had a big discussion, Katie and Shara, we had this wonderful collaborative with all of us there talking about what this was going to look like. And yes, it is only part-time right now, but our hope is to grow it into this wonderful collaborative, big thing where this director can help our community thrive, not just the school, but our community together. So I'm asking to you to reconsider your votes, all of you, and to think about what it could mean to our community when we think of it as us, not us versus them, but us as our community, Shara, our school system, so that we are truly a thriving community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Crew P R S, 561 Indiana Avenue. Um, pardon my voice. I am talking, I want to talk tonight about number three, or 13, excuse me, about the short-term rental zoning ordinance amendment. First of all, I have been attending the planning commission meetings and with all the work that has been done on this, it still is not as residence-centric as the residents would like it to be. The resident ordinance that we wanted, um, I don't know, well, I can, I can venture, I, I venture speculation about how it happened, but, um, I have talked to the planning commission and I've written to them and told them that, you know, they complain about how their, what their proposals are sent over here and then they're changed. And at the last planning commission, uh, meeting, one of the commissioners was, was kind of smack-talking the council and saying, you know, um, we send things over, you know, but they changed it anyhow, just being very flippant about it. And I have, I have documented communication to them and spoken to the planning commission and said that you put together a proposal. Once it comes over here, you all are the elected officials, and I think I've said it here too, because I remember doing this. You are the elected officials and you are voting for your constituents. You do not have to rubber stamp what the planning commission or any of the commissions send here. You are the ones that have to then take it and process it through your lens of what your ward wants. And so I think what happened at the last planning commission meeting, they just took the one, the proposal or the version they wanted and sent it over. So I really hope you will look at it closely and I know we need to have an ordinance in place and I think there's been a lot of manipulation and posturing that has prevented anything from being in place. But I think this is going to be a living document that has to be continued to be worked on, worked on so that it can get to be a document that residents fully support and that is enforceable and able to be enforced. So please don't, please, please remember that when, what you're looking at this evening on item number 13 is still able to be adjusted and worked with. And if we get something in place, that's great. We can do amendments down the road, I, as I understand it. And, um, hopefully you will consider your constituents and the nature of the short-term rental operation in your wards as you process your decision. Thank you.
Joe Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street. As you know, as part of the master plan update, the planning commission has proposed spot changes or reclassifying a few blocks from R1A to mixed use on the south side of Ward One, um, from Elworth to Oakenburg Street. Um, as you know, several residents along with myself have spoken up at city council here and planning commission concerning these proposed spot changes. I've mentioned my reasons for not wanting these changes to take place in several meetings, but for some reason it seems as if it has fallen on deaf ears. I was hoping that someone would make an amendment to, uh, at least get it on to, uh, the next agenda or the agenda tonight. We talk about, it's not about us, it's about the, or them, it's about us. And he ran on the model of, um, what about us? What about us? Well, every time it seems like we mention what's affecting us on the south side, it falls on deaf ears. Uh, so let me repeat myself. For starters, it would allow owners of these properties to request a rezoning at a later date. That's a major problem in my opinion. In addition, I mentioned that the issue with gentrification and in spite of what some investors think, our neighborhood has already gone through troubling gentrification and in large part due to the oversaturation of S T Rs and P U D developments. It would further destroy the characteristics of our neighborhood and cause more unwanted density. Therefore, it is my desire and the desire of many other residents to fight to save what's left of our neighborhood characteristics. This proposed change of mixed use in R1A, single-family residence would allow for apartment complexes to be built on our residential streets. Also, it would feed to the breeding grounds of a more transit neighborhood. This should not be allowed. Furthermore, everyone on this city council, as well as the P C, uh, and I will often, and I will say because I've talked to, said this several times, they know that this would not take place on Monroe Boulevard. This kind of stuff, spot changing, would not take place on Monroe Boulevard. So why would you allow that to happen in our neighborhood? In respect to what you do, I ask that you do not allow for reclassifying or rezoning on the south side of Ward One. Our neighborhood, especially where people of color reside, has already suffered severely from gentrification, influx of commercial S T Rs, tear downs and opportunistic land property grabs of lands that were, that was once redlined and deemed invaluable because who lived in that area. I ask that this council add this topic on the next agenda and, uh, be ready to discuss it and also to vote no on any proposed changes that were, that would reclassify the blocks from R1A to mixed use on the south side of Ward One. This is a problem. I've stood before this council over and over and every time we see the work coming out of planning, they're going forward with this master plan update of spot changing the south side of Ward One. There's a issue on, on Ward Three where the residents are fighting the same thing and it has fallen on deaf ears. So it is hard for people, especially people of color, to come down here and discuss things that matter to them because it always appear to be the same thing. It falls on deaf ears. And so, yeah, I would, um, like for you all to discuss that, at least taking consideration to how we feel. That land at one time was not even valuable. It was redlined. We couldn't invest it and if we wanted to, unless you had the money, you couldn't go to the bank because they wouldn't give you a loan for that type of property. But all of a sudden, that property, property is, all of a sudden, it has become very valuable. So, um, I'm asking that you at least hear me tonight because I'm speaking on behalf of many residents. Uh, as far as.
My minute.
Recreation, uh, I am in full support of recreation for youth. I am a byproduct of the O J A program. We came up, that's why I learned baseball in the J A program. But listen, that program was mostly funded and supported by factories that was in this area. Factories helped support that, that program. We receive our uniforms, we receive more stuff the kids receive now. It is important that we get this right. I don't think we should just rubber stamp it, even though I believe in recreation. We shouldn't just rubber stamp it. I think there should be a level of accountability. When you start passing around taxpayers' money of 90,000, you should take the time out, pause and make sure you make the right decisions. We went fully tourism back in the day when we got rid of those factories, J A program suffered.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott, would you like to speak?
I can.
Sure.
I've got a presentation that he's put together that's in the packet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think it's an agenda item.
Oh, okay. Thanks. Anyone else? We'll move on. Next is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through I?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through I.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Um, I would like to have a little further discussion. I would like to have a little further discussion on the consent agenda item for the H R generalist, uh, consent agenda item H.
Okay. I'll move H to 11A. Roll call.
Arnold?
Yes.
Hosley?
Yes.
Onuki?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
And Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, moving on to old business, the city council will be asked to take the following actions regarding an ordinance granting a franchise to Michigan Gas Utilities and consenting M G U to locate natural gas lines and city rights of way. Kate.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a second reading of a franchise ordinance for Michigan Gas. We've had a previous franchise where they are able to operate in our rights of way. Uh, that has, um, that is coming to expire, so this is a renewal. Uh, we've changed the term from a 10-year to a 15-year, um, and have some auto, have an automatic renewal for a 15-year after that. This is pre-standard business. They're a franchise that operates in the, in the right of way. They're not a telecom, but they are a public utility.
Okay. And we have a need for a public hearing.
I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
The public hearing is now open. If anybody has comments about this, you can step forward. If there are no.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The public hearing is closed. Any questions from city council? Wendy?
Do you expect this will have any, um, different impact on residents and visitors than it currently does?
I do not.
Okay.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to pass the ordinance granting a franchise to Michigan Gas Utilities and allow Michigan Gas Utilities to locate natural gas lines in city rights of way?
I move to approve ordinance 1098 and ordinance granting a franchise to Michigan Gas Utilities, consenting M G U to locate natural gas lines in the city right of way.
Second.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The ordinance is approved. Moving on, the city council will be asked to approve an amended community recreation director agreement with South Haven Public Schools. Kate.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor. So we did go back to the drawing board and look at, uh, possible amended language for the community recreation director. I know that Scott Reinert is here with a, a presentation to kind of update some, some items of, for the community rectoratures. So I'm going to go ahead and start that presentation if you can give me just a moment.
All right. Thank you, Kate. Um, thank you all for putting this back on the agenda. I apologize, I was out of town, uh, last council meeting when this was discussed. I had a brief presentation I put together when I met with the, uh, South Haven School Board and, uh, just like to share that very briefly, just so we can make sure everybody's on the same page. So as you know, and I'm here, uh, I'm actively involved with Shara, with the Visitors Bureau. I'm here solely as a private citizen. Everything I've done around the millage and so, so forth, and the rectoror has been volunteered, my own personal, uh, status as a resident. So, um, again, on August, the, uh, voters approved the recreational millage. Uh, that's been discussed. So if you go to the next page, uh, the intent was that, uh, a third, it's been already mentioned, but a third would go in year one to Shara, a third to the community rectoror and a, a third to city parks. So that's about $90,000 per year is what's been, uh, allocated in the budget, I think, that you guys, uh, reviewed earlier today. So as a background for the rectoror, uh, you know, all of you know this, but typical youth leadership is provided by volunteers, parents in most cases. Um, the school system provides access to fields. Kevin and, and Adam and Al Brock have done a great job coordinating and allowing kids and, uh, youth groups to be able to access the fields and the facilities that we have. And, and honestly, it's served the community well. Uh, it's been many years, as Kevin mentioned, since we had the correct program in place, uh, but it's been managed very well. However, uh, one of the main reasons that we felt was important to address this was that the continuity around program leadership is challenging. We know that typically what happens is a parent will volunteer to coach, their kids grow out and move on, and then we're left trying to find a replacement to come in and, and coach. In a lot of cases, um, those volunteers are tasked with a lot of administrative things besides just coaching. And we've heard from a lot of folks that said, um, not only do they not like those tasks or enjoy those tasks, but in some cases it prevents other potential volunteers from stepping up because all they want to do is coach. And so, uh, we have a, a need to address that, we, we believe. Limited summer youth programming around COVID, we had, uh, in talking to Kevin Schooly, there was a great demand for that when we had those programs in, in place for the summertime. Very limited, uh, adult programming outside of the senior center and the wellness center. And then we've got new community parks. I've talked about many of those, but, uh, besides the Pilgrim Haven, uh, we'll be completing the Porter Property Dune Trail Boardwalk. Uh, River Woods, the acquisition is, uh, very active for that right now. So a lot of new assets coming onboard, uh, that Shara has, uh, has led. So basically, uh, we've had, uh, since, uh, about September of last year is when we started this dialogue. we had a lot of community members that provided input to this. The township, the school system, the rec authority, we're all involved as well. So you can see the steering committee is made up of, again, school leadership, as well as Chara and city staff, Kim from the HR perspective. We also included last fall, as Brock mentioned, Kevin was involved, Adam, Kerry Frost. We had several meetings with the community youth leaders in terms of talking about this and said if we had this position in place, you know, would this be of value? And overwhelmingly, they felt strongly that this could provide some great value to the community. So basically, the conversation points were around job responsibilities. You know, is it full-time, part-time? Is it, who does we report to? And then trying to get an agreement in place between those entities. So we probably had at least six or seven meetings over the course of that timeframe where we tried to hash out. And believe me, we went back and forth. We talked about the pros and cons of all those items as well. And so what we're recommending is that, on the next page, that the position will report to the athletic director with strong ties, obviously to city staff and to the rec authority. The role would be a permanent part-time position to start with, 29 hours a week. The initial compensation will be $50,000, so this is not a minimum wage job. It's a well-paid job with partial benefits. So Nancy indicated us between the payroll taxes and the benefits that we're offering this position, it would take the total compensation package up to about $74,000 a year for a part-time position, which we think is very strong. And the other $16,000, I think Kate mentioned last meeting, the other $16,000 we provided to that person for equipment supplies and supporting the programming that they come up with. All costs would be covered by the recreational millage for the first year. And then, again, we're proposing to adopt agreement as we've identified and streamline the year-one responsibilities. The, back in July of last year, you'll recall that the city passed the resolution identifying the first year, this is prior to the millage vote, but the first year allocation of funds that the city council passed was a third to go to Chara, a third to go to City Parks, and a third to go to the recreation director position, as we mentioned, is about $90,000 a year. That could be adjusted, it says in this language, that it could be adjusted year to year as needed. So what we felt was, we had $90,000 to work with. We don't have, you know, if a full benefited position, full-time position would be fairly significant in terms of dollars, which we don't have at this point. So we thought that this was a great, great place to start. And then we have streamlined the roles and responsibilities. This person, we think, is going to be going out and identifying what are the needs of the community, both recreationally, as with, as well as with the individual programs and so forth. It's not intended, this person is not going to be running youth leagues. They're not going to be administrated, not going to be coaching. They're going to be helping. And so that's going to vary by particular position and particular groups, how best they can help. And then finally, we just, again, just talking about the responsibilities. It's our intent that that person will come back and present to the city. It's been kind of insinuated that this solution might not be the right solution. And I would agree. I respect Jack, and we've talked about this numerous times. I respect his opinion and certainly his experience. However, a lot of us have a lot of South Haven experience, and I believe strongly, very, very strongly, that this is the right solution for South Haven. We've got people that are passionate about recreation. And if we find over time that modifying the position, the job description, or the reporting relationships, we can do that. But we felt strongly that this is the best way to get started. On your packet, you'll see on page 101, one of the things that we did to address some of the concerns of council people, we added under section two, we added the notion that Anna spoke eloquently about. It's the intent of the school board and the school system that we have complete alignment over goals and objectives. And so the city council will have a chance to input with that person and make sure that we have alignment in terms of that. And then secondarily, they'll be involved with the hiring. I did ask Jack to participate with us, given his experience. And I will just say this. We are absolutely committed to the success of this person and this position. If we find that the right person is not available or not interested in a part-time job, we are not going to hire that person. What the language basically says that you're agreeing on is that the funds would be released upon hiring that person. So if we don't hire a person for that job, if that person, the right person, is not available, then we won't hire them, and the no-millage funds would be allocated to this position. We believe, I don't have any candidates in mind, but we believe that there could be folks in the community that have the required experience, passion for recreation, and know the community, know our citizens, and that can make a difference. We believe that there are people out there that could be interested. However, if they're not, and we need to say, okay, we're going to regroup and come back and present a full-time position or some other modification in a future year, then we'll do that. But like I say, we are committed to this long-term. We've got to have the right person in place. If we don't, then we won't hire them, simple as that. So we'd like to go forward. You know, we think we've got alignment within our teams and a lot of people in South Haven who have a lot of experience and a lot of, know a lot of people. We believe that this is the right way to get started. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I appreciate your consideration.
Joe, you're on Chara. Do you have some comments about this?
Do I have, yes, I have comments. I took a lot of heat at Chara meeting because I voted down initially on this position. And the reason I voted down, I felt there was a lot of questions that I had that weren't answered. And I took that position at Chara, and some of them are answered. But then after the meeting, several of us sat down, including a resident, Jack Fitzer, who just spoke up. And I think a lot of the questions were answered. So I'm going to make these points, and this will preempt my vote. That's what you're basically asking me. The city voted yes. The residents voted yes for this millage, and they wanted a rec program. And so that is important. I represent the voters in this town. Secondly, I think several people have made a big point. And that is, we have a lot of good volunteers in this town. So much of this town is done by volunteers. And we have volunteers that will help with recreation, but they don't want to do the administrative work. They don't want to fill out forms. And we've had a couple people actually tell me that. So I think this position will eliminate that issue. I think somehow we have to start small. Maybe we'd like to start with a full-time person paying $150,000 a year and get what Jack has described as a real professional. And I don't disagree with it. That's why I listened to Jack initially. But I think maybe, in this case, maybe we can start small. And I like the fact that you just said, Scott, that if we don't find the right person, then we'll scrap it and we'll change. And I think that's a good thing. The school does have a lot of assets. The school has a lot of good people. I think their involvement, starting right from the top with the school superintendent, who I spoke to earlier today at the Kiwanis meeting after the meeting. So I put all that together, and at this point, while I'm not 100% certain, but I'm never 100% certain on anything, though, I would back this change and have the superintendent because I think we have to start somewhere. And I think this is, I think this is a good place to start.
Thank you. Any other questions? Wendy?
I was just wondering if you could walk us through the decision to have it be a school employee versus a city or Chara employee?
Well, it was basically, to start with, Chara doesn't have any staff, per se. You know, I'm the administrator, so I do the meeting minutes, that kind of stuff, and try to facilitate projects and so forth. So the board meets every other month and so forth. So we really don't have an infrastructure in place, you know, that that person would report to. To be honest with you, we went back to the success that we've had in the past, you know, that, you know, with the correct program, the way that worked and so forth. And knowing that the way it works right now, which is the athletic director, Brock, and previously Adam for many, many years, was the facilitator for all of those groups and so forth. We looked, talked about the city. The challenge with the city right now is, you know, we've got a Parks Department. We don't have a Parks and Recreation Department. You know, Aaron does a great job with Parks, but his background is not in Recreation, per se. So we just felt like this is the right way to start, you know? And we could do this in a way financially that was somewhat more reasonable to get going. So those were kind of the pros and cons that we talked about, you know, that we thought it made sense at this particular time.
I would also add that the school has the more facilities that would be used. We do have a number of parks, which are definitely open to be used, but they don't, we don't necessarily have the courts, the fields that the school does. And so there is a lot of symbology by having us work together and utilizing those assets.
Yeah, and the other, the other thing that we, you know, again, some have said, you know, South Haven's no different from any other community. And I argue with that because I think it is different. One of the things that we have in place that's been mentioned, we have Chara. When you have an organization that includes the city, the township, the school system, and the Visitors Bureau making investments in recreation, that model doesn't exist anyplace in the state of Michigan that I'm aware of. Matter of fact, Jen, the Visitors Bureau Executive Director, will tell you, she gets asked about it all the time. And how did you get that formed? And how do you, you know, how did we get $5.5 million in assets with very little input from public money, you know? So we're very, very grateful for that. So, and I think at some point, as Chara continues to grow, it might make sense, as Jack has mentioned, you know, if we have some infrastructure in place, it might make sense for that person to transfer to Chara. But again, at this point, we just don't have that infrastructure in place right now, so.
Mary?
Yeah. So looking at the ballot language, and actually, I think I found the two resolutions that you had mentioned, 2024-19 and 2024-35. Nowhere in either resolution is there anything that 1/3 would go to Chara, 1/3 would go to the Parks, and 1/3 for the Recs. So...
Yeah, it's at the bottom of page, Resolution 2024-35, the bottom paragraph clearly states that. City of South Haven intends to distribute the remaining tax revenue, South Haven Recreation Authority, the maintenance improvements of parks, and the creation of funding of position to provide structural leadership in order to provide recreational program. It is intended that these funds will be equally distributed for the three areas, but could be adjusted each year based upon overall community recreational needs and priorities.
Which paragraph is that?
The bottom, well, I'm looking at page 1 here, I'm sorry. But it's, yeah, it's the last, again, Resolution 2024-35.
I have the wrong one up. Okay.
So it clearly states that that was the intended allocation.
Did you have another question?
Oh, that's a loose interpretation, but the ballot language clearly doesn't show that. So, yes. Who on the city council was involved with all the meetings that you referenced last year?
City staff, so your city manager?
No elected official.
No.
Okay.
We would hope that the city staff and HR director will be empowered to speak for the city council, but...
And there seems to be a huge focus on sports. And I know that a lot of parents who came forward were talking about non-sports, music, art. Will that be included? Because I have heard no references.
Yeah, absolutely, it will be included. But as Maureen said, you know, probably not this summer. It's too late now for this summer, but we're hoping for next summer. Certainly, that, the history of that, that Kevin talked to us about, particularly around the COVID timeframe, they had those kind of cultural programs and activities, and they were waiting list to get that. So, yeah, it's intended absolutely to try to bring those programs. That's why we, that's why we allocated the additional money. You know, $15,000 or $16,000, we hope that that can provide some free or low-cost summer programs for youth beyond recreation.
And there was mention about liability with the facilities. How does the rec director involvement lower liability issues for using school facilities, like the pool?
How does it lower? No, what, the thing that we've talked around insurance is that we believe each one of those private groups has to have insurance. So whether it's Rocket Football, or JYL, or ASO, or whatever. And so it's hoped that by coordinating that, those insurance requirements, if we can get a one policy that covers all of those groups, it's hoped that the overall insurance cost could be reduced over time, so.
Would that insurance policy then be paid through the rec millage?
No. No.
Okay.
No, the only thing, the only thing is the, is the, is the intended allocation that we've discussed. So that basically payroll, compensation costs, and then support in terms of supplies, or equipment, or uniforms, whatever, whatever the community needs are.
And I hear you loud and clear about the collaboration. One area where I was disappointed was that our, our area has passed a half a mil, and we had raised to Ross Stein about the township increasing their quarter mil to a half a mil to help chip in. Because as it was pointed out, we have 4,000 people, the township has 4,000 people, surrounding areas have additional people. But it's only our tax dollars that are shouldering this burden. Can collaboration be used to encourage the township to ante up? Not necessarily the exact amount, but a similar millage where they can chip in towards this. And maybe we can get towards a full-time position.
Right.
Because it wouldn't be shouldered by just the city.
Right. And I think that's certainly a path, you know, moving forward that would be considered. I think the township has had the millage in place for eight years. I know it's a different base.
It's significantly less.
Yeah, I know it's a different base and so forth. But they have, so far, they've contributed a lot more to the city.
If I can jump in here, too. While the South Haven Township has had a millage for eight years, they have been giving a lot of that money to Chara, and the city has not given anything outside of their per capita. So my understanding is the township has given not only their per capita, but also portions of their millage dollars. So really, we have not been contributing monetarily towards Chara like the township has.
They contributed, I can tell you, December of last year...
If you could let me finish, so she jumped in. The town, most of the Chara parks are also in the township, so. And I don't want to belabor that point. I'm just saying that if we're talking about collaboration, it would be nice if the surrounding areas contributed to this rec director.
That's a future conversation to have. Unfortunately, we're not able to commit to that right now.
I'm just, no, I understand that, but...
If I could just make one point on that, Mary. So, yeah, in December, to Kate's point, December of last year, the township contributed an additional, a little less than $18,000 to Chara out of the township funds. And then the second thing is, is that Ross Stein has indicated the revenues that they anticipate from the marijuana license facilities in the township are going to contribute a significant amount of dollars, of which they anticipate some portion going to Chara as well. So we believe there's going to be a path to make that happen, so they contribute additionally, so.
Again, it's to the recreation director, which is the critical part to have this collaboration. So I hope that the township would reconsider some of that money going to the rec.
I will certainly talk to the township about that.
And I guess, one concern I have with regard to the focus on the athletic aspect is that in the presentation, it talks about the assistant, that the person will be, will assist the athletic director with athletic events supervision and support as needed. So would those be school athletic events, or will those be part of the rec?
If, if any, and Brock can speak to this, but basically, it's, it's the use of athletic fields or athletic assets that are South Haven Public Schools. Yeah. And so, so it could be internally, it could be external fields and so forth, ASO fields and so forth, that are owned by the, owned by the schools. So it's intended as being that. You know, one of the things that I've experienced over the years in officiating and other aspects is that the athletic director job is one of the most difficult in terms of trying to be present at all of the sports, you know, through all the seasons and so forth. So this is not going to be a full-time job for that, or full-time activity for that person. But we felt that there are going to be times where if that person can help provide, you know, leadership and... where if that person can help provide, you know, leadership and onsite leadership and be there to help with any issues or whatever on occasion, we thought that that made sense.
And this is a two-year agreement, correct?
Uh, I think, I think it was two years. So, we could come, yeah.
But, so if this is an annual amount allocated, and the city council can affect the amount allocated, I mean, this is our, this is tying our hands. Is there, is it, are you receptive to making it a one-year agreement so that we can come back and reevaluate it?
Yeah.
That's up to this council. If you don't want to, you know, pass a two-year agreement, and you only want it to be one year, then that's, that's the will of this council.
Yeah, I mean, the intent all along has been that we would come back to council annually and say, you know, here's our proposed allocation of funds, you know, based upon what we've learned throughout, throughout the course of the year and so forth. So, that, that activity was planned, for sure. So, if you feel more comfortable, like, make it a year, and then we come back, that's, that's not an issue, as far as I'm concerned, so...
And then the new parts that were added, I mean, one key factor was accountability. And although the city of South Haven is mentioned in E and F, other entities are also mentioned. And I appreciate that they are mentioned because of a collaboration. But it's our tax dollars that are going there, and it really is not providing the, the city an opportunity to make any changes. It's purely a one-way road, a presentation. So, and, and so I was a little bit disappointed that that aspect hadn't been picked up on.
Well, I guess it, it depends on how you interpret it. My, my interpretation was... Yep, please.
So, when you say the city, are you talking about the council?
Yes, because we're accountable to the taxpayers.
So, my question for you is, like, I am the superintendent, and I answer to my school board. And is Katie not...
Yes.
Your, your, sorry.
They are my boss.
So, and is Katie not your...
Direct report.
Right. Is she not? So, when you say that, are you not giving her the power to speak for you? Is that not her job?
So, she is to execute our policy?
Correct.
Not amend our policy.
Correct.
And sometimes there can be a very fine line about whether it's execution or modification. And with this being completely brand-new, and us trying to find our way, I think a more conservative one-year contract being involved, and also allowing the city council to have some input on the plans and goals to make sure it's what our constituents are telling us.
I don't disagree with that. My hope is, though, that, like, I know that my board trusts me to do what I am tasked to do. And my hope is that you would trust Katie to do what she is tasked to do. That's all. As I'm sitting back there, I'm thinking, some of the things that you're talking to, that you're talking about make me think more of, like, what is in your purview of governance, and what is her job? So, keep going. I'm just curious.
Thank you.
I, I, I attempted, Mary, to your question, I attempted to, to craft this language in, in such a way that they would come for discussion, input, and alignment, is where we, where we put it and so forth. So, it's not intended as a one-way thing. It was intended as, you know, that person will come in with a draft, they'll say, what are we missing? You know, do we need a modifier, or whatever? And, and then, you know, we'll have a collaborative set of, of goals and objectives for that position. So, that was the, that was certainly the intent, so...
Okay, so, the city council would have influence on the goals?
Yeah, that's what, that's what, that's what we put the language in there, Section C, is that...
You mean E?
Uh, I'm sorry, E. Yes, I'm sorry. Don't have my chasers on, sorry. Yeah, Section E.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the intent of that, while we, while we added that, just to make it clear that, you know, this is not intended to be a one-way, one-way thing at all, so...
Okay. Well, I, I would be much more receptive if it were a one-year agreement that would given, give us an opportunity to reevaluate in one year.
I guess I, if, if there's a motion on the floor, then that's one thing.
Well, I'm trying to find, where is the time period in the agreement?
Uh, it was, so, in, in, if I'm looking at the last version, it was Section 5, Term and Termination, the first period of this agreement shall commence on the date approved and run through June 30th, 2026. So, it is, it is for a year.
I mean, you know, paragraph five does have termination and within two, you know, in two years. But there are outs that can be considered by this. And, you know, if, if one of the concerns I've heard is that, oh, it's a part-time job, and you've got all this work to do, and it's hard enough to find a part-time job with this amount of money, making it only one-year position with no, you know, no certainty is going to make it even harder to find somebody. I mean, you have an agreement where there are ways to get out of this agreement. If this isn't working out, or we're not getting the reporting that you're needing. But I think it's hard enough to find a, a part-time position. And if you're making it just a one-year position, that's even harder.
Thank you.
And Section B, I'm, I'm sorry, just to that point, Section B basically gives an opt-out. It says, sort of automatically renew unless either party provides notice to discontinue, so...
Are there any other questions?
I just had a comment.
Go ahead.
Um, just in general, I guess I still have some hesitations about whether this is the right path to take. I mean, in a perfect world, I think we would have a Parks and Recreation Department that could oversee this. After hearing everyone speak today, I feel like, especially with the support of the school, I'm willing to vote in favor of this, and hopefully, it will go well and provide recreation for our community. But I did want to say, I'm hearing a lot of kids, which is awesome, I have kids, I want them to recreate and be busy and have fun. But also, the older population, which is great, but please don't forget about young adults, middle-aged people, like the whole gamut. And then also, like, more marginalized people in the community who might not be as vocal about their needs and wants, but just making sure that they're included in the planning, I think, would be fantastic.
Yeah, point, point well taken. Thank you, absolutely, we will.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the amended Community Recreation Director Agreement with South Haven Public Schools?
I move to approve an amended Community Recreation Director Agreement with South Haven Public Schools.
Second. Could we have a roll, oh, any more discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Of course. Okay. Arnold?
Yes.
Hozley? Onuki?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, everybody. Moving on, the city council will be asked to review the fiscal year 2025-2026 council priorities with action items for approval. Kate?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I brought this back, and put it as an old business item. Just wanted to kind of review, because we had a good discussion in our last meeting about what the priorities are for the next upcoming year. And looking at broad strokes, we had broad categories. One was housing, two, economic development, and three, lifeguards. As we have been kind of coached by Mr. Vandenberg, the idea is to have action items so we can really measure that progress, instead of having the vaguer terms. So, what I've done is kind of fleshed these individual priorities out, showing some of the action items that could be taken according to that strategic planning session that we have with Mr. Vandenberg. And these are some of the items that came out of that, and that were also kind of underneath those kind of headers. So, that's what I've put in here. No extra things were added. This is just something that came out of our discussion. So, it's really just kind of a review what, what we've put on here. If there's any items that you, you think don't belong, even though this was something we kind of talked about with Alan Vandenberg, I'm happy to make that change. But these are just kind of items to show what we can accomplish between, underneath each of these headings.
What would you like to hear from us tonight?
If there's no changes, then I think there's nothing to be done. This, this will just be our priorities that we'll work on for the next upcoming fiscal year.
Okay. Any discussion of this?
I have a comment.
Wendy?
I can't remember if we discussed this at the priority setting meeting, or even last week. But I feel like with housing, I know we've talked about it before, that we need to have the zoning structure in place to be able to have the type of housing that we want, which I know is being talked about in the master plan redo. I don't know if we need to put that in here, like, updated zoning to support housing, so that we could allow for, like, multifamily homes in certain areas and things to that effect.
So, you're thinking of, like, adding, like, an action item that once the master plan has been completed and adopted, that we can then go down, well, effectuate the master plan and see zoning changes?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I can put that as item F.
Along those lines, and I'll raise this under the master plan, but the current master plan was significantly modified, and a lot of language was removed or condensed into mixed use, which allows for unpredictable results, unintended consequences, and I think provides too many opportunities to miss the goal. And, you know, I think the master plan has to have more included to allow for managed density. And what I mean by that is two, three, and four plexes, which fit in residential districts and do not change the character of the residential feel, as opposed to multiple apartment complexes, which do change the character.
I beg your pardon. I, I don't mean to be disrespectful at all, but I guess I'm, I'm just looking for some action plan steps for items one, two, or three, and the priorities. I, I know we're going to have a discussion about master plan. I know some people really looked forward to that discussion. So, is this an action item you're looking forward to be added here?
Well, what I'm getting at is, I think that these action items are not smart goals. They're very broad and can lead us down a wrong rabbit hole. I would like more than a weekend to consider them. And I am okay for this as a presentation, but I would like to have a more thorough discussion, especially after we've finished the master plan, and for the economic, for housing, for economic development. I'm, we talk about plans all the time, and I really would like to see more on an economic development person with more of a solid background. And as for the lifeguards, I'm, I am disappointed that we had to have that for a, another priority for the upcoming fiscal year.
Joe, you have a question?
I'd kind of follow up on what Wendy was saying with affordable housing. I think we should talk, and maybe this is not the place to put it, but I think specifically we need to talk about duplexes. Duplexes fit into a neighborhood, some of them can be built, you can't even tell it's two homes. And since they can't be any more short-term rentals, it invites year-round residents to live here. And it's more affordable because you're taking a lot and splitting. It's the, the very expensive cost of land here. It brings the cost down. So, I'd just like to have somewhere that duplexes are mentioned. And maybe this is not the place, but I think it's important.
That's a, that's a good point. And I think that's something that has been brought up at the master plan. I think that's a good discussion when we get to item 14, because I think that's something that has been contemplated. But you're not, you're not wrong that, you know, the price of land is, can be cross-prohibitive. And if you can get some additional density, that might defray those costs.
Okay. Any other comments? I think we're ready to move on. Okay. 11A. Mary had questions about the HR generalist.
That's correct. So, I'll ask Kim Wise to come on up. We have a nice, open seat right over here. The, the name tag's not going to match, but we all know Kim.
Good evening.
Yeah. So, first, for everyone's benefit, we did slightly touch on this during the budget discussion. And it was clarified that for the number of employees, the 200 includes those who started and may have left in the same year. So, it includes turnover. It's not necessarily the number of employees that we have at any one given time.
Correct.
And so, it's my, from the staff report, it's my understanding that you have someone who does payroll, and it's pretty much all the person does is payroll?
That is correct.
Because they also do Shays payroll.
Correct.
And, and that's been being provided for many years. So, that's nothing new.
Yes.
The HR generalist position, so, you know, you referenced a report. I tried to find something online. I found a couple different things on benchmarking. And it does seem like there's a higher ratio for smaller companies with fewer than 250 employees seem to be a, a common mark. Do, so, is this person mainly, I know a lot of laws have changed recently, especially with the, is it sick leave? Correct?
Right, the Michigan Earned Sick Time Act.
And is that where a lot of the work is coming in?
There's that. There's just, you know, as we discussed earlier, I also do the risk management. So, if there's additional lawsuits that come through or anything like that, that ties up my time. Arbitrations. Tomorrow, we start our negotiations with the police union. So, there's a lot of time. My leadership team, I wish I was more available to them to assist them with employee relations type of issues, or to be Johnny on the spot, and to be able to post positions right away when they want it posted. There's always a delay there. So, I would just, I would like to take our HR department from good to great.
Okay. That, that helps me understand this better. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mary?
No.
Is there a motion?
I could just have one question.
Oh, sorry.
I guess, Kate, I'm just wondering, is there a reason why certain things come before council for approval? Because I'm sure we don't, we don't get involved every time you want to add a new position to your organization.
We have, I think, a rule that if it is brand-new, we have to come to council for approval for, especially if it's extra budget, or extra outside of the budget. And we have not, we're asking to do this now, even though we are putting this in the next fiscal year budget. We would like approval to start the, the job search and hiring before July 1.
Okay. Thank you.
Correct, yes. If we would have just said, this is something we put in the budget, council's going to approve it then, then I wouldn't be coming to you tonight. But it's, it's pretty critical at this point that I get additional help. And so, it'd be nice if I could post that position now, so they could be in place by July 1.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there a motion to approve the posting of a new Human Resources Generalist Position to have the new employee hired by July 1, 2025?
I move to approve the posting of a new Human Resources Generalist Position to have the new employee hired by July 1, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Number 12. Moving on to new business. The city council will be asked to consider approval of the following special event applications. A, request to amend special event application 2025-10, the St. Basil Catholic School 5K Walk Run, to include the use of food trucks in their parking lot. B, special event 2025-22, Van Buren Conservation District Annual Meeting, to be held on Wednesday, July 23, 2025, from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Liberty High Bailey Museum and Gardens. C, special event 2025-23, South Haven Jazz Festival 2025, to be held on September 12 and 13, 2025, from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. in Dyckman Park and the Huron Street Pavilion. And D, special event 2025-24, reading names at Memorial Day 2025, to be held on May 26, 2025, to begin at noon at City Hall. Is there a motion?
I move to amend special event application 2025-10, St. Basil Catholic School 5K Walk Run, to include the use of food trucks in their parking lot. Special event 2025-22, Van Buren Conservation District Annual Meeting, as read by the mayor. Special event 2025-23, the South Haven Jazz Festival 2025, as read by the mayor. And special event 2025-24, reading of names Memorial Day 2025, as read by the mayor.
Support.
All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? The motion passes. Opposed? The motion passes. Next, the city council will be asked to discuss and consider a motion to introduce the proposed short-term rental zoning ordinance amendment as recommended by the Planning Commission. Kate?
Thank you, Mayor. So we have before the council a zoning ordinance amendment pertaining to short-term rentals. We have the version A that was approved by the Planning Commission, forwarded up to the city council. I've also, upon request, provided version B, actually given version A and B your red line that you have in front of you, and this reflects what was also presented at the Planning Commission. We do have here zoning administrator Kelly Desette, of course, attorney Dave Eberly to answer any questions. There, the city coun, I'm sorry, the Planning Commission did have a public hearing on this zoning ordinance, provided that there's not major changes here. There is no public hearing required at, at this level. Public hearings are going to be held at the Planning Commission level. So if there's not major changes, we could set this for adoption at our next meeting. If there are major changes, let's talk about what those are, and then we would have to send that back to the Planning Commission for review. We're here to walk through what has been proposed, what are the differences between the two, as well as the overlay map. So we can walk through what version A says, or if there are questions, what, how would council like to, yes, George?
So I guess I'm just kind of curious, between version A and version B, is the, did the Planning Commission like recommend one over the other? Or are they just wanting us to decide between the two? I'm, because I'm confused, which, which one is, is coming from Planning Commission? Are they both coming from Planning Commission?
Planning Commission recommended version A, and that was part of the resolution of findings of fact.
Okay. Thank you.
Mary?
Yeah, so first, I know that the Planning Commissioner chair had added four things at the end. Were any of those incorporated? Oh, wait, no, I'm confusing that with the master plan. Sorry.
It's because I don't, I don't.
Yep. So I wa, I watched it after I got back. So for clarity, version B was, so at the March meeting, when it was introduced and set for a public hearing, there was a version, and the Planning Commissioners received comments from Williams &amp; Works, our consultant. And then the attorney also reviewed some of it. And version A incorporated most of those that were in agreement. Version B, during that meeting in March, I had made some recommendations, and the chairman stopped me from completing my items for full discussion at that meeting and simply requested that I provide them to the attorney, which I did. And those comments or requested changes were incorporated into version B. Version B was sent to me to get further input by staff and legal counsel. They were not sure that my comments were incorporated correctly according to the email. I sent them back other ques, comments, and that was version C, which was not provided here. At the Planning Commission, if I unders, if, upon reviewing the meeting, the motion was to incorporate version A, which had been discussed. Unfortunately, that did not, version A was what the Planning Commission discussed at the March meeting when we were making suggested changes. My requested changes were cut off from full discussion, so that is why there's a version B. But the Planning Commission did adopt to recommend version A, which does not include any of my suggested changes. And version B does.
Mr. Eberly, do you have comments on Councilwoman Hosley's additions?
No, Mayor, unless there's comments from council.
I have a question.
Are questions from council?
So I'm trying to take this page by page. Jeff is doing the same thing. So far, I'm only seeing, too, I'm not quite through yet, but page eight has, and version B, it has short-term rental lawful non-conforming in the definitions. Could you speak to whether you feel like that's needed?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I believe, and I didn't go back and watch the video, but I believe this was something that was brought up before council, before, and we discussed it, council discussed it, and I believe the decision from council was to send it to Planning Commission without the addition of similar language defining lawful non-conforming. My position on this remains the same. I don't believe it is, is necessary because what qualifies as lawful non-conforming is established, both at state statute and the case law, and your ordinance already talks about it. I don't see a reason to call out and try to go into the weeds specifically on this use, as the zoning ordinance doesn't do that on any other use.
Okay.
I, so that, that's my main reason. I just don't see a reason to treat it differently than any other use.
Okay. And then?
If I could, with regard to that aspect, the concern that was raised is that, and I'm trying to find the location, and retired attorney Lurstorfer actually raised it as a comment at Planning Commission for, it's under the definition of the zoning compliance determination with reference to the current requirements. And so when looking at whether a short-term rental is lawfully non-conforming, it becomes non-conforming with the passage of this ordinance, because it creates the overlay zone and it doesn't allow creation of short-term rentals outside of that overlay zone. And we have short-term rentals all over the city, which are outside of that overlay zone. And there was the concern that because zoning compliance determination, which is going to be the process by which a short-term rental will be determined, whether it's lawfully non-conforming after the passage of this or not lawfully conforming, was how the current requirements would be interpreted. And retired attorney Lurstorfer had indicated support for the inclusion of the short-term rental lawful non-conforming definition to avoid any confusion with regard to the zoning compliance determination for what complies with the current requirements.
So zoning compliance determination, that's on page, I believe it's page 10. A written determination issued by the zoning administrator that specifies whether a used structure or a lot complies with the current requirements of this ordinance, has been granted a variance, or is lawful non-conforming. Again, I believe the addition of an attempted definition of lawful non-conforming short-term rentals is a solution in search of a problem. Nowhere else in the zoning ordinance does the council go in and define, this is what qualifies as a short-term, as a lawful non-conforming use for a stated particular use. This was raised during our discussions as part of the Short-Term Rental Work Group, and at that time, staff's recommendation was, again, not to include it, but understanding that there would be a desire for some folks to have a checklist, a rubric, whatever you want to call it, in terms of what do I have to look at to see if I'm lawful non-conforming, we were going to incorporate that into the materials, as the administrative materials, as part of the short-term rental program, simply a, hey, again, this is not a exclusive list, but those looking to see whether or not they are lawful non-conforming, we're going to point them in this direction.
Does anyone else have questions? George?
Just, just a comment. So if, just to go back a little bit, how we got here was we had sent a zoning ordinance to Planning Commission. It came back almost essentially the same as what we had asked for, and we basically did not adopt it. We basically started all over again. And that's when we went back to try to have the subcommittee, which council member Hosley and I were on. We spent many hours working on a draft zoning ordinance, which came before this body, which we then sent to Planning Commission. It is now coming back with what we had basically asked for. And I'm worried that we're doing the same thing again. We're, we're, we're adding things at the last minute, and it's going to go back, have to go back to Planning Commission to get re-reviewed if we go with the version B. And, and I don't really think that the version B has been well-vetted, because if you look at the definition for short-term rental lawful non-conforming, it uses business and personal short-term rentals, which we don't, no longer use that term anymore. It's class one and class two. So I have a lot of concerns about changing things now. I think, as someone mentioned, we can, in the future, if we find some, some holes, we can fix them later on. But I really don't want us to get into another situation where we're having to push this down the road again.
In fact, you said at a city council meeting that we were not going to do that again, remember?
Yeah, don't make me be a liar.
Well, and? I'm sorry, I'm going with Joe Reiser.
I'll start off. I don't agree with George when he says it's the same. The changes that we made were significant at one point. Aside from that, I agree with George. I don't want to make a minor change and start all over, send it back to them. And our attorney, I think, and I spoke to Kate today also, I think what Mary put in there is good, but it's already in there, and it just calls out an issue that doesn't need to be called out. That's how I'm understanding it, and that's how, and so while I agree with what's stated, we don't need to state it again, and I don't want to start sending it back to planning over something that's, unless it's significant.
Thank you. Okay. Wendy?
I still have one more thing. So on that same page, page eight, I see the two differences under the short-term rental definition. We talked about this the last time. Version A includes resorts and version B doesn't, and we were kind of in different areas of, of thinking on that. But I guess I'm just wondering, what constitutes a resort? Because in my mind, could somebody potentially buy a nice old house, call it a resort, and then suddenly they're exempt from short-term rental regulations?
Well, I'll jump in here, and I know Kelly is here. I do know that resorts are currently defined in the zoning ordinance, but David?
Resorts are defined as a place of typically seasonal entertainment, recreation, and/or lodging. Resort lodging is provided, if provided, may include hotels, motels, single or multifamily residential dwelling units, cottages, campgrounds, bed and breakfast, or some combination as regulated by appropriate sections of this ordinance. And if I can get to it, I can tell you which district. They're permitted as special land use in the RM1, resorts are.
Okay.
And I believe?
But can you answer my question? Like, can somebody just buy an old house and be like, this is going to be a resort, and basically treat it like a short-term rental?
If they fell within the confines of what the definition of resort is, so typically seasonal recreation and/or lodging, and they were in the RM1, and they got a special land use permit.
So an RM1-only?
Yes, ma'am.
With a special?
With a special land use permit, and those are issued by the Planning Commission.
And how many of those do we have?
Well, a, a good portion of the RM district is falling in the new, the proposed short-term rental overlay. On the north side of town, Harbor Club area on Baseline Road is zoned RM. The Trailside PUD area is zoned RM1. The Sherman Hills PUD area is zoned RM1.
As is Overton Infactory condos.
Yes.
So that's not in our neighborhoods?
None of the R1A or B neighborhoods are zoned RM1.
Okay.
And the definition of short-term rental as it exists in version A mirrors the definition that was adopted in the licensing ordinance by council. So when council adopted the licensing ordinance, it excluded resorts.
And we had the similar discussion at that meeting, because someone wanted to get rid of resorts out of that, and this body decided not to, not to get rid of that resorts exclusion, so. We should be consistent, I think.
And one of the points I made at, at the meeting when it was discussed in the licensing end was, unless, unless the intent is to license resorts, don't put it in here. A separate issue is whether or not council would like to see some improved language in the zoning ordinance regarding resorts. Did that answer the question?
Yeah, but then the last thing you said, so.
Not in this ordinance, though.
Oh, okay.
I'm saying if, if, I see them as two, because I think they're, I think they've been conflated, and I think if we acknowledge, look, if, if what council has said thus far in the licensing ordinance is, we do not want to license and treat resorts as short-term rentals.
Right.
Let's, if you want to be consistent, which I recommend you do, adopt the language in version A. Separate from that gets to kind of the question, your, your concern regarding resorts more generally, which is we have resorts as a defined use. They're listed as special land use in the RM1. If council wants Planning Commission and staff to look at resorts as a separate topic, we, we're happy to do that.
Okay. Yeah, I just wouldn't want that to be used as a loophole. But I'm thinking, especially in terms of Overton being an RM1, like having some language once we get to that.
Well, the good thing about Overton is the city owns it, so how it's going to be developed is, is entirely up to city council. But the idea is that when you have RM1 and plus a special land use, so it has to meet the factors of a special land use to, to be considered. That's, that's something if council wants to see tightened up with resorts, that's something we can work on.
You could, in theory, yes, you could have a property that, in the RM1, in the overlay district, that decided to go the resort route as opposed to short-term rental route, but they would be getting special land use and then subject to all the requirements of resorts in the, in the zoning ordinance.
Are we ready to vote on this? Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I, I just have a question. I just want some clarity. Because the Overton condominiums is over on the south side, correct?
The Overton parcel, yes, is on the south side.
So you said that is considered a resort, right, or can be?
It's a, it's an approved, it's a, it's a use that can be applied for the RM1 district zoning, but it has to be done by special land use. It's not a buy right, meaning someone couldn't just buy it and then turn it into a resort. They'd have to go through a separate step to receive special land use to be allowed to do that. But moreover, the city council is the owner of the Overton parcel, so should council not like what they're hearing from a, from a person who's interested in developing that, they don't have to entertain that notion if they're not looking to have a resort there.
Okay.
I had a question as well.
Go ahead.
My question's for staff. The, we got some emails this weekend about the central loft, central condos, extending the overlay district. If we don't do that, are we at risk for lawsuits or takings from those owners? Do we have to consider that?
From the legal's, from legal's perspective, that's, that's always been the big question throughout this entire process. In that instance, we're dealing, it would be similar to any other existing STR outside the overlay. You're lawful non-conforming use. You still have to get a permit, and you're subject to the requirements of the, of the licensing ordinance. If you abandon your use, it, it goes away.
But they can still function as is?
Subject to the new licensing requirements, yes, sir.
George, would you like to make a motion?
I still have discussion.
Go ahead.
So as I'm looking at the red line, it actually is, I don't know what happened, but it's not accurate with what's in the Planning Commission. Again, I, first of all, I mean, the reason we are back at this is the, the Planning Commission in September sent an eight-numbered list with the attorney to come back with changes. And when the attorney came back in November, none of the changes had been made. And as it's been stated, it, it was not, you know, it did not meet what the majority of city council members expected. And that's why we had to go back to the drawing board, because there was not discussion like we expected there would be discussion. And I appreciate that this Planning Commission did spend many hours, but just in 2024, significantly few hours than the 100. few hours than the hundreds of hours referenced. The working group, we didn't really vote on anything. It's what staff and the legal council really wanted to put forward to, when there was not an agreement. And I echo the concern that has been raised about this not being as resident-focused and resident-protective. To meet the balance we should have gotten from what was passed in 2018. And...
So did you not support what we came out of our subcommittee that came before this body?
Well, George, as I had said, and you were copied on those emails, there were certain things that were never even discussed. Specifically, parts of the current ordinance that specifically says when land use would be lost. And those were not brought forward from the current ordinance to this draft. And that is where I've taken the biggest issue with. And enforcement is a big concern. And with the previous, with the current ordinance being repealed, it seemed more conservative to list the ordinances that would be pertinent for determining whether something was actually lawfully existing at the time the first permit was granted and subsequently granted. But the bigger issues are, again, when for the lawful non-conforming, excuse me, and specifically under the short-term rentals, grabbing nine. And it's based on 2130, I think subsection two in the current ordinance. Yeah. So, you know, the improvements for non-conforming sites with regard to short-term rentals, when it would be lost, that is, and that's on page 29, that is based really on our current ordinances and material that Cliff Blum had brought to us and somehow never managed to come out, even be discussed at the working group. And so I brought these, I attempted to bring these up at Planning Commission, but was summarily cut off by the chair. So I was obligated to provide them in writing. And a municipal attorney, who is very resident-focused, spoke at the Planning Commission supporting these amendments. And I find it very disappointing that amendments that were supposed to reach the balance and preserve the character of our neighborhoods and our four goals for our working committee were reduce the number of STRs in the city, minimize increases in parking congestion that may result from STRs, ensure safe STR occupancy levels, and preserve the character of the neighborhoods in which STRs are located. And we said we would aim for 80%. With some of the changes that have been ignored by staff and legal, we cannot meet 80%.
I disagree.
Because the current ordinance results in land use loss for revocation of the license. That is under our current ordinances, under our regulatory and our zoning. And that has been lost in this version. That has been stripped out. So without that, we are decreasing the ability to reduce the number of STRs in the city.
And I also think that by doing these changes, you're putting the city at more risk.
Well, they're currently in the zoning ordinance. They're, the city is at no more risk than, than the city is right now because they're in the current zoning ordinance.
That, to me, is a good reason why we should leave it with version A.
To strike out protections that were for our residents that are currently in our law, to remove those protections. Because those protections do not exist in version A.
And I'm okay with that. And I remember having these discussions in our subcommittee, and I thought you were okay with the version that came out of our subcommittee.
No. I, when we saw the last version, and I finally had enough time to piece everything together, I wrote and I copied you on those correspondence. And I did take issue with what was coming out without additional verbiage, which staff and legal council did not put in.
I think we need to clarify some of the work that the ad hoc committee did. We were given four weeks to put, to get, to put together not only a regulatory ordinance, but a zoning ordinance. We came to you all and asked for your goals, and that's what we used on our whiteboard. We threw up every item, or every idea that we had, and we tried to work everything back into these goals that council asked for. Now, admittedly, these aren't going to be perfect because we had four weeks and we really beat feet. And there was a lot of hours put in by George, by Mary, by Kelly, by Dave and myself to get where we are today. And again, we're not writing these in stone. If we have to go back, we can amend these. But we're also trying to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, we're trying to make sure that the council's needs are being met by also, but also being very cognizant of the fact that, well, we may have something written in an ordinance in 2018, that may not be good law today. And we're trying to be very cognizant of the fact that we understand what the risks are, but we're also trying to get council, their goals met by these two ordinances. And if council wants to see changes, we can, we can try to do them, but it may, we may have to come back. But I would want to make sure, what are we, what is in the language that we are not providing for this council that is, is bringing up concerns? And I understand, member Hosley, but I'm looking for the balance of this board. What are the concerns that we're, we're not meeting or we're not obtaining here by this language?
If I may, mayor.
Go ahead.
I'd like to clarify something. I believe every point that council member Hosley has raised in, in version B was discussed in some form in the STR work group. On the last meeting of the STR work group, we were here till midnight or later, where staff sat and typed on the computer, just like happened in here when we did the licensing ordinance, what Mary and George put together and put in there. So to say that this draft only reflected what staff and legal council wanted is simply not true. To say that staff and legal council are ignoring what was requested is a misstatement as well. There are things that council member Hosley has lobbied for, has asked for, but the bodies we were in front of at that time, i.e., for example, the Planning Commission, did not want those things. Therefore, staff and legal did not put them in the revised draft. Things council member Hosley wanted at the STR work group, her and George, we thought, we thought we had a compromise. One of those compromises was, as I had stated earlier, we won't put the definition of short-term rental lawful non-conforming in the ordinance, but we'll put it in the administrative rules. My understanding of that was that that was an acceptable compromise. Of course, people are free to change their minds, but it is a gross mischaracterization of fact to state that these things were never discussed or to imply somehow that legal council and staff is trying to undermine this body, who I and Kate and Kelly consistently affirm that we work for and we serve at the pleasure of.
Thank you.
Can I ask one more question? Okay. In terms of the short-term rental language at the bottom of page 29 in version B, that, if I'm understanding correctly, is in our current ordinance and then stricken from the new proposed version. So it does kind of, I think we already talked about, it covers if a permit lapses or such things.
I'm not aware where that exact language, I'm not aware where council member Hosley's referring to. If you'd like to point me out to it, I'll definitely take a look. I know the lapse issue was language that was discussed by Cliff, and the concern was, well, what, what does lapse mean?
Mm-hmm.
And that led into the conversation that we've had before in terms of, well, abandonment's the rule. An abandonment requires intent and non-use. Your zoning ordinance further defines abandonment, again, within the parameters of, we still have to check the intent and non-use buckets. If you lose, if you, if a use is abandoned, it's, it is abandoned. And if it's not, no longer permitted in that district, you would not be able to then re-establish that use.
Okay. And what about revocation?
Revocation would be on the licensing side.
Okay.
There is an interplay between the two. The proposed language in, in version B, under, I'm on page, I think it's page 29 of version B, where it says, "A lawful non-conforming short-term rental use may not continue as a short-term rental or is lost and is terminated from the lot if the license or registration is revoked." That, again, gets back to what we discussed here before and what the STR group spent a fair amount of time discussing, was there's a difference between losing your license and losing your vested land use. License, hey, you don't meet the requirements of the licensing ordinance, we're revoking your permit. You can always, you know, if you got the year cooling off period, then you can apply for another one, et cetera. But to lose land use, there has to be abandonment, intent and non-use. Now, there's, there are arguments in there where, under the licensing side, you have that one-year cooling off period. That's a year you can't use your property if they perhaps re-establish a different use. One could argue that they've abandoned the short-term rental use because they've established a different use. But if they let it sit there and say, you know, short-term rental coming soon, they clearly not intended to abandon the use. So after that cooling off period, assuming they can get a new license, they can go back in there and continue the use that they had as a short-term rental. Does that, does that help?
Yes.
So it's section 2132, just like I said.
It's on page 21 dash 27 of the short-term, of the South Haven zoning ordinance, talking about established grandfather zoning use. And it says, "Upon initial designation pursuant to subsection one above, short-term rental business unit shall be considered an established zoning use that may continue to exist on the zoning law unless and until the short-term rental registration, one, lapses for a period of a year or more, or is revoked pursuant to section 10 dash 245 of the city code."
And Mary, your 10 minutes is up.
And thank, thank you for pointing that out. My comment would, on that would be, I think the language council has in the new licensing ordinance is better, and I think the language in version A is better. Simply because it was in an old ordinance does, in my mind, is not a slam dunk argument for why it should be carried forward. As part of this process, we took the time to evaluate some of the weaknesses that were in the old ordinances, just like we put everything on the table. We started from scratch in the working group when we did this. We didn't look back and say, oh, what has council wanted before? What has the old ordinance said? Because we recognized that there was a need to put, we put every crazy idea on the board when we started because we realized that we had to start from a clean slate if we were going to get anywhere.
And point of order, I don't know, you're, my...
According to Robert's Rules of Order, you had 10 minutes and you used them.
According to Robert's Rules of Order, my time assisting or commenting on other people's comments do not count towards my time.
I didn't count that. I didn't count it. I counted the time. Is there a motion or do you need more discussion?
I'd like to say something. I really don't care intent. I don't care that he said, she said, and what happened and what didn't happen. What I care about right now, at the 11th hour as we get it, what, what the residents have asked for over and over again. Here's what I understand. See if I got it right. Number one, there can be no new short-term rentals anywhere in this city other than the overlay.
Correct.
Correct.
Number two, there are no more personal short-term rentals. It's now class two, and you cannot get a new personal short-term rental except in the overlay. And nobody would do that. They would just get a regular one, most likely. But that doesn't matter. That's the only place they can get a personal. And Kelly and I talked about that. So now we get down to the other thing that residents have wanted since day one, to bring the number slowly down, but without breaking the law, anybody who has a short-term rental license now, we can't pull it away from them. Unless three things happen, if I got it right. Abandonment, you, you can come up with the wording, but abandonment is one. Breaking the rules. And then the third one is destruction of the property, which is, to me, a little gray. If it's 60%, 70%, I've talked to Mary about it. I don't know, I'm not a lawyer. But that's the three things. Now, if we get those three things and we already have no more short-term rentals, I think we got what we want. So can we move forward and finalize this right now?
Yes.
Yes, make a motion.
I make a motion to introduce the proposed short-term rental zoning ordinance amendment as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Second?
Can we have a roll call, please?
Arnold?
Yes.
Hosley?
No.
Onuki?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Does everyone need a break? Let's take a five-minute recess. Does everyone need a break? Let's take a five-minute recess.[369.31]
...out of the barn. And that was a resounding message at Planning Commission with regard to rezoning of Victoria Resort.
Right, the horse is out of the barn once a property is rezoned, but I think not out of the out of the barn with master planning. Master planning, again, is intended to provide broad categories of potential use for the future. And these uses were contemplated by the Planning Commission as a whole and voted on and sent to the City Council for consideration by City Council as a group.
My understanding is the one resident who had requested the mixed use on the south end of Ward One had requested that. I mean, I filed a FOIA request trying to get clarity on exactly what was requested, and there was no written request. It was all oral, which makes following it a bit difficult. But he actually withdrew his-
Because the discussion was had at the public meeting where you were present at the workshop. That discussion was had at a public meeting.
Well, you brought it forward for the resident. The resident was not there.
Correct, but the conversation occurred at a public meeting.
But anyway, we're getting off, so what I'm trying-
Excuse me? Please speak. Go ahead.
No, she interrupted me, actually. So-
Kelly, you make the difference.
It's okay.
And so, I mean, the discussion for the mixed use, I mean, it was my understanding, we were trying to simplify it because of the multiple districts. I believe the simplification has resulted in a net that can be cast so broadly that it will actually result in the deterioration of our community, our residential district, and have the opposite effect of what's intended. And that's why I would like to see the narrative a little more clear so that we know what's there. But I do know, based on input from residents, that the future land use map should be modified. And I even alluded to that fact at the last planning, City Council meeting, because I knew I was going to miss the Planning Commission meeting, that I think the intent of the majority of the City Council is to protect our residential district, and that means not infiltrating it with mixed use, which is supposed to be really on the border. And this is taking up 10 blocks of R1A essentially in the south end of Ward One.
I don't understand that. Oh, I see, it's on Broadway. Yeah. I agree.
Which, I think you might be on the wrong.
Oh, I'm looking at the future land use map to see the mixed use here.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah, yeah. I would like to say that I agree. I'm usually a fan of mixed use, just to increase some of the things that were noted, like walkability and access. Like, if there's a food desert, then you have access to food. But to me, this is too open and broad, and I would not like to see our neighborhoods impacted by- Yes, like, just, I don't know. I just could see that going in a bad way, and that we wouldn't be able to take it back.
So, by mixed, mixed use, do you mean a small grocery store with an apartment or two apartments on top?
Well, I don't think we get to dictate that. So, that would be a great example of what would be a nice addition to the neighborhood, but there could be some that would potentially negatively impact the neighborhood. And I don't think we could say, yes, you could have a grocery store here, but you can't have a resale shop, clothing boutique, whatever. I don't know. It just worries me with this being considered somewhat a prime property for investors or what have you. I would like to see it protected.
Kelly, is a mixed use, is a grocery store with two apartments on top an example of mixed use?
It is. And I worry a little bit, Councilmember Anuki, that you're, and not that your points aren't valid, they are valid, but again, this is a future land use category and not a zoning category. It's not a zoning district. And so, the mixed use, land use category contemplates residential, commercial, and recreational uses. And the purpose of this category is to provide for a mix of uses that might include retail, office, service, and residential uses that would enhance accessibility, walkability, and community vibrancy while remaining compatible with adjacent residential areas. A key aspect of this category is integration of missing middle housing, ensuring development complements existing neighborhoods through thoughtful consideration of setbacks, lighting, parking, and other factors that may impact surrounding properties. And that's the first, that's the first paragraph here.
Yeah, I read that.
And this category goes on. So, it's not, this is not a zoning category. It's the zoning, these are items that would be considered.
I understand that completely. I just am not necessarily in agreement that it's the right thing to do.
I agree. I totally agree. I have a problem with the mixed use. I just, I just feel like it's going to give someone a loophole to do something we don't want.
What kind of mixed use are you concerned about? Can you describe it to me?
Yeah, short-term rental.
It won't be, can't be. We just voted on that.
We keep saying that, but I can just foresee someone else maybe not using that language, but using something else and just doing what they want to do.
If I may, if the mixed use is the hangup, is it, but is multifamily or duplex, triplex, or quadplex acceptable in this area?
You mean, like, for example, if you were saying that was next door to me?
Well, I think what I'm talking about is this area that was identified as the area between Elworth and Elkenburg, between Indiana and Center.
That's a problem.
Okay.
I feel that that is a problem.
So, no duplexes, quads, or anything like that? Okay. Joe?
I think Letitia and I have talked about it briefly and several other residents around your home. And my understanding, the big concern about mixed use is putting apartments in a residential area. That is absolutely what we don't want. And when Bishop Wilkins stands up and says, would you put an apartment, whether it's three, four, 10 apartments on Monroe Boulevard, we all know the answer. So, we're trying to protect all the neighborhoods from, quote, this mixed use. And I, and I'm not speaking for you, Mary or Letitia, but I, what I understand is we're being, we're trying to be extra careful with that term, mixed use, because it's too broad, and you could open the door to potential abuse. So, so I say, let's spell out what we will allow, like duplexes, maybe triplexes, and in R1 and R2. But the mixed, the word mixed use, I'm not the lawyer, but I don't want apartments on residential streets unless they've already been zoned, and then they're not in R1, I don't think. So, that's the concern, to take a nice neighborhood. And unfortunately, Letitia's side of town, there's been some abuses already. And so, they're being extra careful, but it can happen anywhere in this city. So, I'm telling you what I don't want. Tell me how we word this thing. Because when you put it in the master plan, it's only a guide. It's not the zoning, like you said, Kelly. But we don't want to send the wrong signal by saying, oh, we used the word mixed use, but we didn't, we, this is what we meant in the master plan, but then somebody else takes it to mean apartments in a residential street.
What I'm hearing from council members is a desire for that area on the map to be shown as a single-family residential housing rather than any other designation.
Correct.
Mr. Eberle, did you have a comment from a legal standpoint?
No, Mayor, unless there's a particular question, Councilmember Rees or one of you to dig into a little bit. Okay. Mayor Brown, I just got a quick comment. So, I initially had some concerns, especially based on what I heard from some residents, but after looking at this and listening to Kelly, I, I've come to the realization that the reason for this is to try to allow for as many options as possible. And I'm okay with that, because it is not rezoning anything. And I am not afraid that it's going to open the door for unwanted development, because that will happen in the Planning Commission. I know there's a lot of people on Planning Commission, a lot of residents that will, that know how to go to Planning Commission meetings and speak up for what they want. So, I, a lot of people have put a lot of time into this master plan. I, for one, on City Council, don't want to micromanage the work that they did. I thought they've done some really good work looking at this master plan. I'm ready to move it on myself.
I agree.
My, my comment would be just, I'm definitely worried about what Bishop Wilkins is talking about, but what I heard Kelly saying is that this is just the high level. This is, you know, that we will manage this through zoning. I mean, I'm, and what I'm battling is, we say we want affordable housing, but if you don't want duplexes, how do you get affordable housing? How do you get, we certainly don't want the apartments. We got that clear. But how, with the triplexes, the duplexes, if we don't want them in there, well, then we're not, we don't really want affordable housing. So, that's what I'm battling. But like George said, a lot of good work already in here. This is just the high level. We will manage it through other means. So, I'm fine with it mixed, but if you, if you, if there's a motion to change it, we can vote for that, too.
Yeah, I, I would move to remove the mixed use from the south and, well, between Elworth and Elkenburg and Indiana and Center, and put that back to R1AB, whichever it was. I think there may have been one B3 in there.
I'll second.
It's just, what I've heard is that that's what, the whole intent of the work was to protect our residential districts, and that does not do that. And what I had said at Planning Commission was, I would support the mixed use, but it had to be because they were trying to decrease the number of districts. So, they were incorporating the urban attached dwelling units, which I thought were more appropriate. And if you look at the current future land use map, that is what is there, but only along Indiana. And it really just significantly impacted that area. And that's, from my comments, what I was, what I saw in the future land use map and the narrative, were not meeting with what I expected.
Okay. Do you have the, do you have the language of the motion? Okay. Are we ready to vote? Let's do a roll call.
And this is just for the amendment?
Huh?
Is this for the amendment?
Yeah, I can restate the motion. I have a motion to remove mixed use from the south end between Elworth and Elkenburg and Indiana and Center Street, and to put it back to R1AB or C, whichever it was.
If I can clarify, in the master plan, the land use category is single-family residential. It's not a zoning district. R1A is zoning.
So, go back to the-
Single-family residential.
Okay, single-family residential. Are we ready?
If I may, real jump in there. I think that there was a small, little neighborhood business category that was in that area, or no?
I thought there was. I thought I said there, I thought I saw a B3 in there.
Neighborhood business, like a B1 or something?
It's Reverend Cobb's.
Okay, just so, we're just so, putting it back to where it was.
There's a park.
It's the Andy, is residential business.
Reverend Cobb's store.
Yes, and Reverend Cobb's store.
That's outside, that's another side of Elkenburg.
So, just restoring it to what it, what it was.
To what it was.
Okay.
Wonderful? Are you ready?
Okay.
Arnold?
Yes.
Hosley?
Yes.
Anuki?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. I would also like to discuss, as Wendy had raised and Joe had raised, I'm not sure it's clear, but I would like to see some support for discussion to amend to allow at least duplexes in residential. I don't know if it would be by special land use, so it would be an extra stop, but something to allow at least duplexes, maybe triplexes, in our residential districts, as long as they comply with the current zoning ordinance requirements. I think that's one way. And we also have heard a lot about tiny homes, and there was one comment about tiny homes in the survey, but I don't think tiny homes ever made it into the description. And I don't, I, what I'm hearing is the millennials would support tiny homes, prefer that. I don't know if that would be through a PUD. But, you know, Kelly, did I miss it anywhere? I don't see it. I searched.
I don't remember the Planning Commission discussing tiny homes.
I know it was brought up to us, and I just never saw any changes to incorporate tiny homes. And like I said, I know it was in one comment, survey comment.
Is this more of a zoning issue than-
We have, the language in single-family housing now, the last paragraph says, "A goal of the master plan is to increase housing and residential uses. It is recommended to permit low-density multifamily housing in single-family land uses that blend into the existing neighborhood. This can be accomplished through duplexes and triplexes that conform to existing neighborhood character, possibly by special land use."
So, it's already in there?
So, it is there.
Already there.
Okay. And can you point out where it was updated to incorporate Chair Stegman's request to support splitting out lots in Overton such that it could be single-family residential?
That, give me a moment, maybe in one of the goals.
That was added at the Planning Commission on April 10th.
Is this about Overton? Because there are single-family homes planned for Overton.
What he was recommending was that Overton, the whole property, would be split into single lots for single-family homes.
Who said that?
Oh, I don't think we-
Chair Stegman.
I don't think that's how it's supposed to-
So, at the, on page 76, the last paragraph under the Overton section talks about that. It's like the third paragraph on page 76 of the master plan.
I see it. It writes, "If the property continues to remain undeveloped for multifamily use, single-family uses could be considered, and the city could retain a building envelope near the Van Buren Trail right away for restrooms or a small park." That was the addition from Chair Stegman.
So, which master plan are you looking at?
I'm looking at the one that's linked.
The one that was linked to the-
And what page is this on? Because I found page 76, and I'm not seeing over-
It's 65 in the PDF. I mean, regardless of him putting that in there, I mean, single-family use is an accepted use in the, in the R1. I don't think that's this council's wish, but that is an accepted use under the R1 district. But that-
So, then I guess, why would we want that in there if we, if it's already allowed?
Right.
It's-
Good point, Wendy.
That's a good point. I didn't necessarily agree with it, but at the same time, we're not here to kind of select those comments. If that's what they asked to put in there, and they motioned for it, that's what we're, what we're doing.
And it was not unanimous vote.
I didn't say it was.
And it is only a recommendation.
Either way, it's here. It's been put in. If you don't want it, strike it out.
Do you want to strike that?
I don't.
I don't.
I don't have faith that we're going to get it done. We can't get this done.
Okay. Any other comments?
Kelly, for the coastal resilience, there's no mention of the Edgewater report, is there? Because I thought that would be critical to how guide zoning.
Yes, the, the first paragraph says that the-
Which page?
Chapter two coastal resilience, page 32 of the PDF, notes that this chapter was developed based on the LEA chapter, as well as the shoreline analysis from Edgewater.
It starts on page 32, is that correct? Chapter two?
Yes.
So, is it possible we could make a motion to approve the distribution of the master plan in accordance with the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, as changed as we discussed here?
Yes. Is that your motion?
That's my motion, yeah.
Second.
So, I, I have one other. On page 25, for the short-term rentals, it says, "The city of South Haven is reliant on its tourist economy, which has shaped the community's development." I mean, we do have other forms of employment here. I mean, this sounds like the city will only survive with tourist economy. Is that something we want in the master plan?
Where did that come from? Like, who wrote it?
Mary, where is that again? I'm looking at-
Page 25.
25, so it would be page 25 of the PDF, and 25-
26 on the PDF.
Yes, we have a huge tourist industry. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Hosley? Yes. Anuki?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I just make one comment about?
Yep.
I was just wondering if at any point we could do, like, some kind of assessment or what have you, in terms of meeting our goals for the master plan? Like, kind of talk about that they're written down. They've been written down since 2018, but I kind of like to know what we've achieved, what we're still lacking. I mean, obviously, we can look at it and determine for ourselves, but I feel like as a group, talking about that and seeing where we're at would be kind of helpful.
Are you, are you looking for the past five years for, since, since 2018? Or are you looking for going forward?
I mean, I like to do a review to see if we've met some of those goals. I just think it'd be good, like, sometimes it's easy to lose sight of it.
This master plan does contain some of that information.
Kelly, can you email that to Wendy?
I can, and it might not be everything that you're hoping for, but it might be a start.
Yeah, I mean-
You can have that conversation going forward.
Yeah, I mean, I just feel like being able to talk about it together and then talk about it with our constituents is helpful, more so than I'm just reading and trying to figure out if I think we've done this or not. That's what I mean. Just a thought.
Okay.
Next public comment. Citizens of the audience will be heard on items not on the agenda, and you have up to five minutes.
Good morning, oh, good evening, Sedill. This is Dan Williamson. I live at 20001 Lake Shore Drive, south of town in the township. I'm here on behalf of the Bailey Museum, but I won't mention what I came to support because it's been approved, and I appreciate it very much on our behalf and also the Conservation District. They've been our partners for many, many years. Last week, we again distributed trees on the west side of Van Buren County for them. They used the property for three days. One benefit, when things were slow, they picked up about 5% of the sticks in the wood. Today, when I was working in the McNeil Room, I was very happy to see DPW staff who drive by, offered, stop, bring the skid steer, and took the first pile away, which is really important, because tomorrow is Earth Day. We have a stick pick at 4 o'clock tomorrow at the Bailey. Please, everybody come out, rain or shine, those of you still listening and awake. It should be fun. It's been a lot of fun in the past, and we have plenty of inventory of branches, because most of you know, it's been a real windy winter. So, don't be bashful. I've got a bag of gloves. Bring your own. They might fit better. But thanks to DPW to get them out of the way, because we need that space for all the sticks tomorrow. Next, some of you know by my weekly broadcast with Paul Landecker that months ago I mentioned Bailey was chosen to participate in a podcast with a woman named Jennifer Jewell, who created the Cultivating Places Foundation in Chico, California. I announced last Friday with Paul that it was a smashing hit Thursday when the podcast dropped, as some people call it. We listened live at the museum. John Stempian, our John Stempian was the star. He did an outstanding job. It's a podcast on our website. And 30 hours later, we got a text, or actually, a lengthy email from Jennifer. She had 3,000 downloads already in 30 hours.
Wow.
And that was right after the podcast. He did a great job. It's a great story. It's a really good listen. Next time it's raining so hard, you don't want to go out, except tomorrow afternoon. Lastly, I found out from Julie Shepherd at the school that we are again sending two students or more to Nationals for the History Club, 16th year in a row. That's wonderful. We're also hosting them at the Bailey Sunday, the 27th, for an afternoon at the museum, where they'll all present their papers again. There'll be some live performances and presentations starting at 3 o'clock. So, please, come join us and learn much about what they've been doing and how they excel, much like their robotics team. Thank you from the district and from the Bailey, and everybody have a good rest of the evening, as short as it is. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Joe Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street. I serve as a leader in an organization that has 6.5 million people. You all were elected to be leaders in our community. The characteristics of an effective leader, I pulled out three. Number one, the ability to influence others. Number two, transparency to an extent. And three, integrity and accountability. All three and others are very important to be an effective leader. I said that to say this. But one that stood out to me as very important was, to be an effective leader, is empathy. Empathy, the ability to understand and share the feelings of another, respecting what others have gone through or going through. I applaud Mr. Stegman's willingness to serve this community. I applaud him for the time he has spent on other boards, his expertise and knowledge that he brings to the Planning Commission. The problem that I have with Mr. Stegman, that the chairman of the Planning Commission does not have the right in a public forum to highlight the names of a few people of color from our community who represents an ugly, who represent an ugly part of our, our community history without telling the names of individuals who represent an ugly part of others' history in this city. Remember, we all have a history. The chairman of Planning Commission does not have the right to tell people of color what affects them. The chairman does not have the right, from his seat, to tell an erroneous history of our community. Because the chairman took upon himself to regurgitate what he thought to be, believe to be our history, especially when it comes to this derogatory word called zone, named zone, named zone, I ask that the mayor, with the support of this council, push the mayor to require Mr. Stegman to show some form of accountability and require that he immediately submit a written apology, a written apology to the residents who lived or live on the south side of R1 and who had to deal with the stereotypes that came with this word being used or living in that area. Now, I close and I say this. I've stepped before this council many times, and I've grown over the years. I used to come here and just go off on certain people. But as I matured and realized that my way of handling things were not professional and probably wasn't the best way, I learned that you have to be willing to apologize when you've offended others and move forward if you're going to be an effective leader. No one is above making apologies. If I offend you, I'm going to say I'm sorry. That comes with being a great leader.
That's true.
So I require you, Mayor, I'm asking. I don't require. I'm asking that you do what's right. I'm not going to let this thing go. He offended a lot of people in my community. And you always talk about, "What about us? You come in our neighborhood. You visit. You support many." And I thank you for that. But I will not stand back and let this be pushed under the carpet. And you all of us standing here, sitting on these seats, should require that that young man make an apology to our community. He offended elderly people that served in that community. Zone did, our area was not considered a ward zone.
Give one minute.
And it was dropped to zone later. That is wrong. And to spell out a few people that didn't have a ticket passed and made a few mistakes, he offended loved ones of people that he called out by name. That seat wasn't a place to try to regurgitate some wrong history. So I'm asking you to do what's right, and I want this council to force you, at least push you to do what's right. I'm not going to let it go till we have a written apology.
Anybody else? If not, we're moving on to city managers' comments, and this includes an update on lifeguards and an update on the prosecutor for the city.
Okay. So lifeguards, at our last meeting, we had direction to come back with revenues to understand the program, as well as what city staff understood the costs to be. Because we got a suggestion, we got a suggestion of a plan from Chris Brewster, and I know that Kim has been emailing back and forth with Chris to kind of flesh that out because we got the rubric, but we have to put some dollars and cents to it as well as figure out what things are. So the idea is that we're hoping to bring back that plan on 5/5. It just wasn't ready for this meeting, and probably not until 10, 12 at night. Maybe it's not a bad thing, but that is the plan, is to bring that back in 5/5.
Okay.
As for advice on next steps for prosecuting attorney, I'm looking for the council to give me direction.
Okay. So you can put it on the agenda at a future date?
I can do so.
Can it be at the next May meeting, at the next meeting?
To just put it on there for selection, or were you looking for interviews? What are you looking for? Because it didn't pass on the last one, so I guess I'm looking for you all to let me know what you're looking for.
It didn't pass. We had a split vote. We now have seven people. I mean, do you want to take a vote tonight?
No.
I guess I'm not prepared on that, but, you know...
No, we're not. Can you check with the second law firm to see if they have any conflicts of interest with us?
Yes, I can do that.
Thank you.
And I can put that on. I just don't, if I put it on the agenda, is it just contemplation of next steps? Is it selection or is it interviews?
Do you want an interview? Okay, so we'll put it on the agenda at a future date.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have the time by when the current attorney is going to be retiring?
No, he's kind of hanging on, just looking to find out when we're going to make an official designation. So no, he hasn't said, "Kate, here's my drop dead date," but he is, his health is one of his concerns, and we really appreciate all the work that Mark has done. He's been a fantastic attorney. And I've also clerked for him when I was in law school, so I'm maybe a little biased, but Mark knows the community very well. And he's also been in contact with other folks who've been interested in this position, but we only have the two submissions that we've received.
Any other city manager comments?
Sure. So on my weekly update, I did share out that the weather buoy has been deployed. Thank you, Mr. Tom Renner, for those pictures. Anyone who's interested in getting data from the weather buoy can go to the website, which has been linked on our website, or they can text 866-218-9973, and you can text 45168 to get those current temperatures and current data. We also have some information on our website about water service line replacements. We're working with Five Star Energy to do a number of replacements. There is a map that has been shared with the community that shares the different work zones. We're going to be working our way from the Lake Shore Inn. We also know that we've got two projects that will be completed this fall, Elkenberg Street as well as Huron Street. So we're trying to hit those sewer line replacements before we start road reconstruction. We also have William Street Parking Lot, construction that's going to be under construction. I think that started last week. We've got updates up on our city website, also trying to let people know if you can't park here, where else can you park? So there's some details there for anyone who's interested. And lastly, I wanted to give a huge kudos to staff. Michelle Argue, Dana Byrd, Kim Wise, DPW superintendents, department heads, with their efforts in preparing the proposed budget. As you know, preparing the budget is a critical component of city administration. It takes us several months, and it takes significant effort by staff to put this document together. So I appreciate everyone's efforts in getting us to this point. So thank you. Those are my comments.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. Thank you for the update on 90 Avery regarding the railing. You could still see the stairway above the line, so that seems like it's a height violation still. And there hasn't, to my knowledge, been any address of the concern raised by residents with regard to violation of the zoning ordinance with projections into the yard and properly installed fire pit. When will those be resolved?
I'll have to look into that. I just received your email today, so we'll have to look into that.
And then for the overlay zone for short-term rental, because I had used my 10 minutes, I didn't get to ask you this. Maybe for the next meeting, Kelly could clarify. We had two inquiries, one from 220 Park and one from 271 Black River, whether they were or were not in the overlay zone. I think it would be beneficial to give parameters or some clarification to them, residents who have written. I forwarded, I believe, both of those to you. I think they came to city council.
I'll look into them. Thank you.
Council member comments? We'll start with Letitia.
First, I want to say thank you to everyone who came out tonight and all your input and everything that you had to say. And I also wanted to say thank you, Councilwoman Hosley, for all your input that you have given. We certainly appreciate it, and to everyone, basically. But I also wanted to make a quick comment to Bishop Wilk, about Bishop Wilkins' comment about the planning commission chairman, Tim Stegman, and I think I did this the last time. And I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on it, but I certainly agree. I know you can't make anybody do anything, but I encourage you, Mayor, to say something to him in regards to that because it was very offensive, and I stated that the last time. And I'm sure if I took a poll in this room, I would say classroom. But I'm sure if I took a poll in here, no one in here would like their family member's name being called out for misfortune. And I'm sure he would not like the Stegman name being called out for any misfortune. And I think that when it comes to the things that are going on in the city, we should never make things personal. I mean, I've never gotten up here and said nasty things. I mean, we get nasty emails and comments all the time, and I don't name drop. None of us have. Because we are leaders. We are serving the people. He is serving the people, and he has a responsibility to act like a leader, to act like a 56-year-old, and he needs to be held accountable for those nasty comments. And those are my comments for tonight.
George?
So I just want to say, we got some good things done today. We got short-term rentals, zoning ordinance done. Well, we still have to go through the one more meeting, but we made big progress there. Master plan, those are two big, major efforts, and the planning commission, I want to give them a pat on the back because they did a lot of work on both those things, getting those through, especially the master plan. A lot of hours spent on that, a lot of workshops. So I just want to do a shout out to them for everything they've done. That's it.
Thank you. Joe?
Yeah, I'd like to thank all the people that came also tonight because there was a lot of people, and a lot of people stayed for several hours, and that just shows their care about the community. I think tonight was a good example. I think George has said it, I'll just reiterate it, that the city council worked as a group, a cohesive group.
That's true.
And when we did disagree, we did it respectfully. We worked it out. We came up with a conclusion, and we passed it. And the REC and the STRs, two examples. I hear from people many times saying, "City council's dysfunctional. You guys take too long. You don't get things accomplished." I think tonight, we dispelled, at least tonight, all three of those. Second thing with Mr. Stegman, I found, as Letitia said and Bishop Wilkins said, I found it offensive, and I'm Ward 1. So I take it especially to heart, his comments. We don't talk about it, but I find it offensive what he said about Mary Hosley. It was really offensive, and she knows, and I'm not going to even repeat what he said, but he said it publicly. And somehow, he threw my name into the mix. And I have told Kate, I am willing and able to meet him anytime at a place like this City Hall with Kate there, with Mary there, and myself there, and talk through some of these statements that he's making. A real leader wants, I've said it before, wants to bring people together, then sit down and talk this thing through like an adult, like a responsible adult, and get it finished and get it done, and it would be over. Thanks.
Mary?
Yeah, I want to echo thanking everybody for coming and writing in and calling about the different matters. We appreciate your input. Dan kind of took some of my thunder, so yes, the history group, 16th year, he missed that they will also be presenting at the Scott Club on May 1st at 1:00 PM. Big shout out to Julie Shepherd, the teacher who nurtures them and helps them, and this year's theme is rights and responsibilities, so it's quite appropriate. I very much support Bishop Wilkins' request and ask you, Mayor Brown, to show leadership and talk with the person you recommended to the planning commission, who is the chair and has made some very contentious comments about our residents, and it does show lack of leadership. And, you know, this has been going on. We have received emails, and to my knowledge, nothing has been done. And it's been long enough. That really needs to be done for leadership purposes. I think Councilman Reeser also raised other issues that should be addressed, and I would welcome a joint meeting to address that. And I do think we have made progress. I know that there is repetitive comments about having to redo this twice for the zoning ordinance for short-term rentals. I believe that, you know, echoing some of the things Councilman Reeser said, that we can disagree respectfully, and that also means being able to say, "Time out. We need to rethink this." And that does not mean we don't appreciate the work that went into it, but sometimes things are missed. And we should not be afraid to say, "We need to redo this. This is not right." I remember one theme for project managers was, "Get it right first." And if you have to redo it to get it right first, you redo it. And I am pleased that a majority of city council members were willing to take that risk and stand up and say, "We need to redo this." And wish everyone a pleasant evening.
Wendy?
The only thing that I would like to say is, I'd like to voice my support for Bishop Wilkins' request. I do feel like an apology to the community and to the families that were besmirched is in order. So I would like to see that happen. And that's it.
Yeah.
I want to also thank the planning commission for all their hard work on the master plan and on the STR reform, and thank you to Kelly and Dave also for your hard work and long hours, as Dave pointed out. And those are my comments.
Thank you. It is 10:26. One way to save time and to shorten our meetings is to ask Kate your questions ahead of time. When you get the agenda on Wednesday, you can contact her then. If you have questions about the consent agenda, you have Thursday, Friday, and then Monday to ask her any questions you want, and that will knock off time from our meetings. We think they're long. People watching our meetings think they're long. When I go to Paw Paw and a commissioner says, "Wow, your meetings are long." So let's strive to make our meetings more efficient. Those are my comments. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Adjourned.
Oh, if there's no further business, we're adjourned.